We are live.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Jason Perro, Chairman, and I call to order this January twenty four, two thousand and twenty two, regular meeting of the Board of Selectment. This open meeting of the Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June sixteen, two thousand and twenty one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube and find the link listed on our agenda. Additionally, we have on the agenda the Zoom webinar links for webinar participation, phone number for audio only connection to the Zoom webinar. And also you can follow the proceedings on Northborough Cable Access Television Government Channels, Verizon thirty and Charter one ninety two. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participations required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I'd like now to confirm the connectivity of the members of the Board. Members, when I call your name, please unmute yourself and respond in the affirmative. I am Jason Perro, Chairman. We also have Vice Chair Leslie Rattan. Clerk Scott Rogers.
President.
Member Julianne Hirsch.
President.
And member Kristen Wickstead.
President.
Next, I'd like to go and check connectivity of staff members who are participating in this meeting. Staff members, when I call your name, please unmute and respond in the affirmative. You have Town Administrator John Codere.
President.
You have Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins, who is also our Zoom host for the evening.
President.
The Finance Director Jason Little.
President.
Public Works Director Scott Sharpentier.
President.
Police Chief William Liver.
President.
Fire Captain Rob Tev.
President.
And our Admin Assistant, Executive Admin Assistant Diane Whackel.
Agent.
Thank you. And we also have connectivity through Northborough Cable Access Television. Thank you for your support. Meeting ground rules. For presenters or applicants listed on the agenda, I will invite each speaker applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others, please request to do so through the chair. And each vote taken by the Board this evening will be conducted by roll call. When we reach the public comment section, I will explain what we need to do. And that takes care of the preliminaries. And so let us begin with the agenda. First item is the approval of January ten, two thousand and twenty two meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Leslie.
I move that we approve the January ten, two thousand and twenty two meeting minutes.
Moved by Leslie Rattan, seconded by Kristen Wickstead. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Hi.
Julianne Hirsch.
Hi.
Scott Rogers.
Hi.
Leslie Rattan.
Hi.
And I, Jason Provot, I carries unanimously. Next, we have past the hour seven P M. We have a public hearing to consider an application for a new all alcohol beverages package store license as submitted by the two seventy six West Main Street Northborough LLC, doing business as Brothers Liquors for premises located at two seventy six West Main Street. Becca, do you have our applicant?
Yes, I'm bringing them in now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Patel.
My name is Samir Patel. I live in Franklin with my wife and two kids. I currently own Danny's Liquor in Bellingham, Mass. I've had that store for about three years and it's been running very successful. I'm planning on opening another store in Northworld. My background originally was in engineering. I have a bachelor's degree from U Lowell. I worked in med device for about fifteen years while doing liquor stores on the side with my family. Liquor store has been doing really good for me, so I decided to do full time and right now I have one store that I operate. So I'm trying to open my second location.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We also have Marshall Gould, I believe, representing the applicant. Hello, Marshall. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I think the app, well, actually, there is one minor thing. There is one just typo error on page three of the application. It under section seven, it lists the landlord's name is Pan Jam Realty, and it's actually Pam Jam, so it's P A M, not P A N.
Got it.
And other than that, the application is pretty complete. I think all of you were aware of two seventy six West Main Street. It's the building where Pickle House Deli is and on the far right hand side, as you face the building, there has been a retail store called U S Sports and Apparel. And that's in the exact space where Sam Patel is looking to put his establishment. So it's forty two hundred square feet. He's going to have to do some build out on the interior, primarily a couple of coolers, office, little office space for his business. And beyond that, it's going to be racks and places to store his beverages. It's going to be wine and malt. No consumption on the premises. It is a typical section fifteen package store license. Samir is here today. If anybody wants to ask him any questions, I know that he signed the Corey paperwork and I know that Brian has, Brian Griffin has investigated. So if anybody on the Board has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman. If I can just interrupt for a point of clarification, Attorney Gould mentioned that this was for wine and malt. This is in fact an all alcohol.
I'm sorry.
Just, just so that we're clear on that. And as you know, from the memo from Diane Whackel, we have this additional license based on the latest census. The number of licenses the community has is based on their population. And so since our population went up by about fifteen hundred people, we were granted by the state under their formula, another license. Because this was a new license, it was advertised. The T and G went out through town news, so everybody has an equal chance that they're interested in. Mr. Patel was the only applicant, but this is a new all alcohol package store license.
Thank you for the clarification. He is not only going to be the owner, but he's going to be the onsite manager. He's committing to spend a minimum of forty hours a week there. So if anybody has questions, I've asked Samir to be prepared to answer any as well.
Very good. Thank you. And Lieutenant Griffin, would you care to comment on your background check?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. As you know, I've, as the agent assigned to the Board of Selectment, I did conduct a background check on Mr. Patel. He has the current business in Bellingham. It's very successful. I've spoken, I've spoken to officials in that town and they had nothing but positive things to say about Mr. Patel's store there. He did have a license, a, a, a package store license in Taunton. There were two violations there for selling to underage youth. I've spoken to Mr. Patel and his attorney about those issues. Mr. Patel was not on site during that time. It was his partner who took responsibility. Mr. Patel has since removed himself from that partner. We discussed those issues that took place in Taunton. He assured me that to prevent anything like that happening ever again, he's installing ID readers at his Northborough location. And all staff, including himself, will be tips certified. I feel comfortable with what he has presented to me at this time, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. And I just want to clarify this application, the location is in proximity to Saint Rosa Lima Church. And I guess I'm wondering about any input that we've had from the church or what particular consideration that, that invites in reviewing this application.
Answer that.
Yes, please.
We haven't, we haven't received anything from Saint Rosa Lima or any other butters. It is a public hearing. Someone could certainly call in. But as of this time, we haven't heard anything.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Appreciate that clarification. Members of the Board, questions, comments? Leslie.
First of all, thank you, Attorney Gould, Mr. Patel, for being here. And thank you, Lieutenant Griffin, for your letter. You already really covered what I was going to ask about or clarify that that you, Mr. Patel, will be tip certified as well as all of your employees and that you would have ID scanners at your checkout point. Can you explain exactly what an ID scanner is and how that works and how you will ensure that all of your employees use that?
So when you get tip certified, you're basically getting the training that you want to card everybody that looks over thirty. We make sure when we hire somebody, we get them to be certified. And then ID scanner has all the information from all mass residents. So if the ID is expired, it'll come up yellow. We cannot sell. If ID is underage, under twenty one, it'll come up red. You cannot sell. ID is good, it'll come up green. We still verify picture and the birthday on the ID, even though the machine's selling us, it's good.
Okay. So that is the first thing that happens before the person checks out and pays for the alcohol. That's the very first step.
The first thing. I mean, they will come with their product and first thing you would ask is can I see your ID?
Yes, okay. Right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Kristen Wickstead.
Hi, um, thank you for, for all that information. Um, so I'm just more asking about, since I'm sort of the newest kid on the block here. So we got another liquor license in town because we have a bigger population. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, so does that mean that if we give this one to Mr. Patel, then there won't be any other ones for a while? How, how do they come up? How do they get?
Yeah, so it, again, it's under mass general law. It's based on population. It's one of those strange things in Massachusetts where they limit the number of pouring licenses and package store licenses that you have based on your population. We have gone through scenarios where the town has requested additional site specific licenses for economic development, like up at the mall, the senior, the, the phase two of the mall for, for the restaurants that were there. There were five additional licenses that we requested through the legislature and they were granted. But these are the basic licenses that we have based on our population. And so at this point, we've had three all alcohol package store licenses. And this is the fourth. So based on the census data, the additional population means we were allotted one more license. And since it was a new license, we thought and felt it was appropriate to make sure that it was widely advertised and known in case there were other folks that might be interested. And as I said at the beginning, Mr. Patel was the only one who has applied for that license. But yeah, that would be the last license. The only other way they become available now would be is if one of the establishments did not renew their license and went out of business essentially.
Okay, so just to follow up then, so is a pouring license different than this kind of all alcohol license?
Yes, pouring licenses for a restaurant and there's two, there's two different types of licenses under, that's considered a section twelve is all alcohol restaurant license and a wine and malt. So just limited to basically beer and wine. Same thing with package stores. There's all alcohol, so they sell liquor as well as a wine and malt. And then there's just a wine and malt package store license. We have five of those and four are in use at the moment and one is available. So for the wine and malt, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kristen. Julianne Hirsch, did you also have a question or comment?
I, I do have a question. Um, so the butters were notified by certified mail, correct?
Yes.
Okay, was it certified mail return receipt requested, you know, those green cards or was it just, we hope they got the letter?
We have, it was the certified and they signed for it. So I have the green cards.
Oh, okay. So they, they, they all received it. Okay, so that's, that's helpful to know that no one is here and no one is objecting. Okay, so the, um, just because we have the license, because we have fifteen hundred more people, are we, are we obligated to grant it with, to an applicant who has an intact application?
It's up for the Board to use its discretion to determine if it's in the public need.
The public need. Well, okay, so you know, there has been, there's a lot of talk about economic downtown development. And one of the ideas that comes forward frequently is a micro brewery or brewery. How would that affect, how would that be affected if we give this license to a package store tonight?
Yeah, that, that would be, what you're referring to would be a pouring license. So that would be one of the restaurant license and we have six of those available.
We have six available.
We have six all alcohol restaurant license available and four wine and malt pouring licenses available. So if it was a brewery, it would fall under the, the, the wine and malt for beer and we have licenses available for those. This is a package store license, not a, not to be confused with a pouring license, which is where you go and you sit down and you're actually served and it's consumed on site.
Okay, and so I guess this would be a question for Mr. Patel or Mr. Gould. Um, so we have a package store at four eleven West Main Street, which is not far from this potential location. And then, of course, there's Wegmans up the road and BJ's up the road. Um, you know, I, how, how did you decide on this location with so many other stores in proximity?
I can speak for it. So I'm, I'm not too familiar with Northborough, but I go by West Main quite a bit. That particular intersection is one of the perfect locations for a retail liquor store. I've, I've developed few stores in the past, so I kind of have an idea what location would really work for a retail liquor store. And that, that location definitely it's a good fit.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I want you to be successful, but the, um, but, but there's serious competition nearby.
So I, like, I've been doing liquor stores for a while. I've been very successful. I can compete with most of the stores in that area. I know how to buy products right at the right price, sell it at the right price. I've been doing this for a while, so I know I'm going to be successful.
Okay, that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, Julianne. Any other questions or comments from members of the Board? Scott Rogers.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe to follow up on, on some of Julianne's questioning. Mr. Patel, is there a particular like market that you're looking for?
Yeah.
Do you have like the variety of your products and kind of the type of customer that you're looking to entice?
Yes, so over the last few years, our initial focus goes on craft beers. We focus a lot. I have, my wife owns a store nearby in Clinton, Mass. called Brothers Liquor now. But they're well known for their craft beers and that's how we initially start because a lot of the stores nearby won't carry the varieties that we're going to carry. Won't carry some of the beers from Maine or Vermont. We, that's how we start our business. We're gonna, we're gonna have products that you're not gonna find at Wegmans or you may not find at that other liquor store you mentioned. Those are the products we can carry because we have that connection with those vendors now because we buy it at our other locations. My family has few stores in Mass and that's how we have the connection with these local breweries.
Great, thank you.
Once again, Board members, any questions or comments? Julianne?
Yeah, I, I just want to thank you, Scott, for following up on that. That's, that's a really good piece of information. It kind of changes the whole picture here. So thank you for that. And thank you, Mr. Patel. It makes the store sound particularly interesting.
Yeah.
If there are no other questions or comments from members of the Board, this is a public hearing. Members of the public who are connected by the Zoom webinar, I don't see anyone connected by audio, so everyone's connected by the webinar. If you would like to comment on this application, now would be the time to raise your hand. The virtual hand raising through Zoom, I should. Going once, going twice. And there are no comments from the public. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
By Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rattan. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Hi.
Julianne Hirsch.
Hi.
Scott Rogers.
Hi.
Leslie Rattan.
Hi.
And I, Jason Provot, I carries unanimously. The public hearing is closed. Any discussion by Board members? And I'm sorry, perhaps I should invite a motion first.
I was wondering where that was.
I was thinking there should be a motion in here somewhere. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to approve the application for a new all alcoholic beverage package store license as submitted by two seventy six West Main Street Northborough LLC, doing business as Brothers Liquors for premises located at two seventy six West Main Street, units nine and ten. And further, the Board has determined that the all alcoholic beverage package store license will not be detrimental to the educational and spiritual activities of the Saint Rosa Lima Parish at two forty four West Main Street.
Scott.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rattan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Hi.
Julianne Hirsch.
Hi.
Scott Rogers.
Hi.
Leslie Rattan.
Hi.
And I, Jason Perro, vote I, carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Patel. Look forward to the establishment opening. Thank you, Attorney Gould. And thank you, Lieutenant Griffin.
Thank you.
Next, it's past the hour seven oh five P M. And we have Tim Kalen, Diversity and Inclusion Committee, presentation of final report and recommendations. Becca, if you could bring Tim in, and I see there are several other members of the D and I committee. I might certainly be happy to have them brought in as well.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you for the presentation portion, I'm just going to have Tim Kalen and the Vice Chair Miriam Ibrahimee. And then following the presentation, if there are questions from the Board, we can invite other members of the committee to answer them if, if that's needed.
That sounds terrific. Thank you, Becca. Welcome, Tim. Welcome, Miriam. Chair and Vice Chair of the Northborough Diversity and Inclusion Committee. It's been a long process for you and a busy process for you. A lot of work being done by the committee over a relatively short period of time. And just want to thank you in advance and invite you to go ahead and proceed with the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to speak with everybody tonight. As you said, it's been, uh, it's been a lot of work over the last twelve months. But I think, um, I think the recommendations that we're going to make tonight are thorough and well thought out and hopefully resonate with the Board and, and give us a chance to move forward in two thousand and twenty two and beyond. I would like to share my screen if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. So just, uh, just to help to, to keep us on point tonight, just a table of comments of content on the, the items that we're going to go through tonight. Just a review of the scope and charge for the committee. Progress of the committee included a timeline, so you can get a sense for what we've been up to for the last twelve months. And then the bulk of the report will spend on public outreach and recommendations. That's really what the focus will be on tonight. And if, along the way, if you have any questions, feel free to, to interrupt or pipe in at, at any point.
Do you want to move into presentation mode?
Yes, I was going to suggest that.
Yep, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 that's, that's exactly right. I just want to be sure that it's as large and as visible in the recording as possible.
Good.
So it's good.
Yes.
All right, so scope and charge. Before I review the, the scope and charge, just one thing, I, I personally just wanted to thank everybody who was on the committee. We have put a lot of time and effort into this over the last twelve months and the, the members on the, the committee have done just an extraordinary job and have truly been a, a, a pleasure to, to work with over the last twelve months. Everybody's taken this responsibility very seriously and it's, it's just been, again, it's just been, been great to work with everybody. So I just wanted to say thank you to Deidre. to Deidre Writing, Chica Holland, Mary Leach, Virginia George, Lauren Bailey Jones, Becca Meekins, Miriam Ibrahimie, and Hamilton Soriano. That was our committee, and I just want to thank all those people. They did a great job. And I also wanted to just say a special thank you to Leslie Rutan. She's been a strong supporter of our committee, and she's been someone that I've I've reached out to for for some for some help on some things over the last 12 months, so I'd be remiss to not thank her for for her contributions over the last 12 months. So thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Tom.
You are welcome. So I think the 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 most important aspect of our scope and charge culminates tonight. The the main point of our committee was we had a 12-month charge, and we were responsible with making recommendations to the Board of Selectmen regarding diversity and inclusion for the town of Northborough. We also had the charge of engaging with the community. And as you'll see, as we go through some of the slides, we have done that over over the last 12 months. So again, this is the the final piece, and we're excited to to share what we have. I won't go. This is the progress of the committee. I won't go through through these in much detail. A lot of these we reviewed when we came before the board in July. So these these the the board's probably familiar with. I will pick up, though, in August of 2021, that's after we met with the board. So in August of 2021, we met with with John Kader, the town administrator, and had a very productive conversation regarding town staff hiring and some policies in the town, and John was, as always, very well prepared, and if anybody has a chance, I highly recommend that you watch that meeting on YouTube, because I learned a lot myself about how the town, you know, behind the scenes and and some of the operations that go on and what the future looks like for the town. So it was a very informative meeting, and thank you, John, for for attending and sharing your knowledge with us. We also know with the Historic District, had a very positive conversation with the Historic District Commission. I think there's a real opportunity for the DNI committee if we are to continue to work with the Historic District Commission so that we can all learn a bit about our past and how that ties in. You know, some of the things we learned is is there was residents that from Northwood that that joined the North to fight the Civil War specifically because they were opposed to slavery, and that was the whole reason why they they joined the Civil War fought. So it's there's some interesting historical aspects to the diversity and inclusion in the town. September of 2021, we had a table at Apple Fest and had a chance to speak with the community. That was very successful. We launched a Facebook group in September, gained over 100 followers in the first week, and that's been another great way for for our committee to engage directly with residents. And then we also hosted a virtual community listening session and had a very good turnout for that, and the residents that that called in shared some very important and very powerful stories about their experiences, not only in town, but just in in general. And hopefully, we can hold sessions like that in the future. Then October through December, we worked on on finalizing the recommendations that we're gonna make tonight. And January 22, we are here to make the recommendations. And so this is the the bulk of the report, and I'm actually gonna turn over the presentation to Miriam Ibrahimie, the Vice Chair of the Committee, and she's gonna take the board through the recommendations.
Hi, everyone. Just gonna share my screen real quick. Alrighty. All right. Thanks for having us here tonight. I am going to be talking about our public outreach and some of the recommendations that we have outlined in our final report. First and foremost, it is to establish a permanent committee as a result of our work. You know, from the very start, we knew that the scope of the short-term committee would not be enough. We've done important work, but creating a permanent committee is necessary and crucial to continue this DEI work in our town and work towards implementing some of the plans. We'll outline and continue to engage with our community members. All right, and then our second recommendation talks about media actions that the board can take. So this is kind of implementing immediate change and sort of by voting yes on it, the board can quickly work towards implementing this. The first one is the recognition of Juneteenth as a local holiday, and that would be through supporting in the personal bylaw and voting through at town meeting this spring. And then the second one is permanently renaming and recognizing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And this is important in recognizing the accurate history of indigenous communities, including the Nipmuck land that Northborough is on. All right. Next one is about staffing, recruitment, and training. So this is around, obviously, employees, staff, members of the town. And so the first one is a review of current recruitment policies and training for staff, looking at procedures and hiring requirements that are in all the departments. And, you know, having that comprehensive review and making sure that they're effective and inclusive to have an equitable working environment. The next is about reviewing job descriptions, and there's a classification and compensation analysis and report currently that will determine an updated list of accurate job descriptions and give competitive salary ranges. And then next is to make sure that public safety continues to develop a relationship with Public Safety Academy schools. This was after we met with Chief Liver and talked about the Pittsburgh State University Police Program, which is a great opportunity for the department to potentially work with qualified and diverse recruits who are coming out of the program. And then lastly, you mentioned here is the continued continued support for the fire station building project. As of current, the building does not have separate quarters, but this new building would allow for more aggressive recruitment to diversify the fire department as it would allow for quarters that are inclusive to not just men. Next, we largely also talked about community engagement and a sense of belonging. And so this first recommendation is to adopt a formal town common use policy to allow for a more inclusive use of the town common where community members can gather and have events and you know, engage with each other. And so we've drafted a town common use policy that would allow for the members to use town common. And then next, we worked with the Community Affairs Committee and met with them a couple times to talk about what kinds of events that the town holds. So we kind of sat down and talked about various events and identities and religious backgrounds and cultures that we can celebrate in our community, and this is not a comprehensive list, but this is as a result of like what we've talked about in our committee, and that includes, you know, celebrating Chinese New Year and Ramadan and Holy and Eve and Juneteenth and Pride Month, Diwali, among other things. This year, we also saw a menorah lighting this December, which is a great addition to be inclusive to the Jewish community in our town. And then we also have within this group, supporting the creation of a LICM group with a with an appointment liaison from our committee, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. We met with the Northborough, Southborough Regional Schools. We have two member in our committee, we had two members also from the Regional School Committee's Coalition for Equity. And we talked with them about their conversations with the LICM, and that is an ongoing project that people on the school level have been working on. And we hope to partner, or, you know, whoever isn't a part of the diversity and inclusion moving forward, partners with the Coalition for Equity and the Northborough Library to create opportunities for listening and workshop series for the community to create education opportunities for everyone. And then, and then lastly, in this category, we also have exploring opportunities for the town and school and partnerships for United Statements and Messages to the Community. This was brought forth when we wrote statements during Black History Month and for Juneteenth and when there was violence against the AAPI community, the Asian American Pacific Islander community. And we thought it would be far more effective if the town worked together with school in creating partnerships and writing messages and statements of solidarity and support in a timely manner. So that would create more community, you know, working together and bringing that partnership. And then a large chunk of our recommendation has to do with the strategic plan process and grant programs. So first, what we talked about is the ADA Accessibility Self-Evaluation and Transition Plant Grant Program. And this grant would, you know, review existing town infrastructure from a legal accessibility perspective and give us a cost estimate and roadmap for improvements to really support ADA accessibility. Next, we went to pursue the completion of a diversity inclusion strategic plan, and this is a five-year plan for how the town can continue to implement and reinforce these changes and recommendations. And this will allow for a comprehensive review of policies, procedures, practices, culture, training, et cetera, et cetera. And really allowing members of the DEI Committee and designated town staff to oversee this five-year plan. So what's in the five-year strategic plan? We've talked about incorporating inclusive language for all policies, procedures, and board names of the town. I know that this the board has had conversations about changing the name of Board of Selectmen to Select Board, and that's not necessarily something that can happen overnight, but can surely be brought over brought through with a strategic plan. And so that's just one of the things that we talked about, and then having an audit or assessment of current policies and procedures of all departments, and that includes public safety. Looking at the review of hiring, internal, external communication, and overall agency culture, and then also having a conduct assessment, sorry, of town's workforce and compare that to population census data, and then giving recommendations for improvement. And then having one survey of the public to gauge education level and belief systems around diversity and inclusion, and then having a survey of town employees, elected officials, appointed bodies to gauge their education level and belief systems around diversity and inclusion. And then we've also talked about surveys that, you know, are used to inform at least two focus groups with members of the public and two focus groups with employees, elected officials, and appointed members. This is something that we'd hope to do through our committee, but, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into diversity and inclusion, of course, and, you know, we hope to see that happen moving forward, but we weren't able to do in the year that we had. And then the also included here is creating a plan and guide for continuing community engagement education on topics of racial and social equity and giving up educational opportunities to hold conversations and spread awareness of the community, and this can be conducted through the LICM. The LICM historically has been a place in Northborough that allowed for educational opportunities and really having difficult conversations and being able to bring in speakers and bring in people who can engage with the community. And then we talked about developing a diversity and inclusion training manual and a plan for staff that's easy to follow and implement. This includes best practices and promotes a welcoming and inclusive environment for town officials and employees where they work. And that's about it. I know that is a lot, but we're here for it to answer your questions and anything else, but we really wanted to say thank you for everybody who engaged in this work, and that was everybody who's on the committee, all the town officials, this board, and town employees, everybody from A to Z, like we would not have been able to do this. Community engagement is a large part of being able to effectively do DEI work, and I do want to mention that, you know, what we've done is really great for sure, and but it's just the beginning. You know, we can dig much deeper into our work, and I hope that we continue to have difficult conversations and be able to really challenge what we consider community and be able to foster more inclusive and equitable environment for all of our community members. And that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Miriam. Appreciate that. Tim, thank you. This is, as you might guess, a lot of information for us to digest, and I anticipate over the coming months, we will be taking up a number of the recommendations for kind of greater depth and and decision process about how to move forward with with these recommendations. Members of the board, any questions or comments at this time? Actually, Becca, perhaps we could bring in the the other members of the DNI Committee?
Tom.
Yeah. Let's see, Deidre and Chica and Virginia. Hello, members. Deidre Writing, Chica Holland, Virginia Sins George. Appreciate your being here with us tonight and and all the work that you've contributed to this process into the work of the committee over these this last year and a half, really. So thank you. I'd like to give each of you an opportunity just to offer some comments if you like. Deidre, I'll start with you.
Sure, I just hearken what's already been said about the appreciation. It was a great opportunity to serve on the committee, not only meeting the other committee members who collectively shared a vision, but also to meet with all of the people that we invited to have sessions with us. I really got a deeper understanding of the way the town operates and how really dedicated people are to this work, and I think one thing that moving the committee forward would do is to make more visible that work. I think a lot of that that really struck me that so many people are dedicated to this work, and it'll be great to have an opportunity to showcase that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deidre. Chica?
Hi, good evening, everyone, and and thank you for having us here. Thank you for giving us this platform to share our recommendations and to the team. Collectively, you all were amazing to work with. In terms of continuing with the committee, I think that, you know, there's a lot more work to be done. I'm really proud of what the team's been able to do in a short period of time. But I'm really excited about where the team can go with regard to DEI and really pushing our whole community to think a little differently and and really drive for that inclusive nature that we all want to see. So really excited to have you all react to what we put together and and see how that progresses in the future.
Thank you, Chica. And Virginia? And Virginia?
Good evening, everyone. How you doing?
Good.
It's good to be here. It's been a journey, and it's been a pleasant journey and an educational process. We've learned a lot. We, I think all of us have grown, and we have a sense that this is something that would be very valuable to the community to continue the work. We got a lot of feedback, and we got a lot of examples of things that we weren't aware of and made us think a lot about this work. We have to remember it's a journey, and we're just beginning the journey. We have to take small steps. This was a lot, I'm sure, for you to think about and to see tonight. But hopefully you'll have an opportunity to review it, reflect on it, and identify some of those things that would make sense for us to continue. I've enjoyed the work. I want to thank Tim for his leadership and Becca for keeping us on track and also meeting people that I did not know and joined on the committee. So thank you so much. We're here to serve you. Please let us know if there's more that we can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia. And not the least, I want to invite Assistant Town Minister Becca Meekins, who is not only the staff member, but also participating member of the community. Becca?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I just want to reiterate what's already been said. I'm very proud of this committee and for the work that we've achieved over the last year. I am very thankful for all the staff members who were more than willing to sit down and who were eager to learn and be given opportunities to progress or do better, if there were any. And I would like to thank the board for allowing us to embark on this journey, and I hope that you have found our recommendations to be insightful. And I do hope ultimately that you'll support us in the next phase of work.
Thank you, Becca. Next, I guess I will invite board members if they have any general questions or comments they would like to offer. Leslie?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I guess wow is the first word that comes out of my mouth of this. First of all, first, Tim, thank you so much for all your work. I know you really did a wonderful job leading this committee, and thank you to both you and Maryam for this presentation. And the PowerPoint here really is a drop in the bucket, actually, compared to the information that we received here ahead of time, which is a ton of stuff with a ton of detail in it. And to be honest, there was so much more accomplished than I thought would be in this period of time. It's amazing to me, the kind of thoughtful recommendations that you made, the background information, the surveys, the Facebook page. There are just so many things that you all set in motion that I can't foresee not continuing this committee, for one thing, and also realizing that there are so many aspects to what this committee does that really touch on all the other committees that we have in town. There is something for everyone in this committee, and the work that you do really is impactful and would impact a lot of other committees and a lot of the work that goes on here in town. I think it's just fantastic what you've put together here. And just going back and I just made some very quick notes, and it's really not in particular order here, but the Facebook page is fantastic, and I know, Sheikah, you had put a lot of work into that. And really, it was just bang, 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 you putting things on that page that people could take a look at, you know, links, and really get some conversation going in some cases, but really more than anything, it's a lot of information, very informative as far as what people could tune into to to widen their perception of things a little bit. So I want to thank you for that. I think that's a wonderful page. The virtual listening session, I thought, was wonderful. To me, it reminded me of just a drop-in. It was like a drop-in listening session where you were present for this particular period of time, and residents could simply drop in if they felt comfortable doing that and saying things that were near and dear to them and knowing that they were being heard. So I hope there's more of that going forward. The bonus here for me was seeing a town common policy. That was extreme. That's very comprehensive. There's so much, there are things in there that I, I'm a big detail person, but there were things in there that would not have even occurred to me as far as what we need to stay away from, not allow, have, have, and really in fairness to everybody. So I think that was a really well-conceived document that I think is worthy of review and something we sorely need at this point. Seeing all the different holiday celebrations, I think that, you know, growing up in America, there are so many holiday celebrations really that we haven't even heard of. And that's unfair. There are people who celebrate these things, and we need to expand our world and understand and enjoy a lot of these other celebrations. The idea of a strategic plan where the town staff liaisons, I think is a wonderful idea. So, oh, my last point, and I think this is huge, really is a partnership with the schools. I feel that, you know, once your kids are out of Algonquin, you tend not to even see the school unless you attend town meeting, which I hope everybody does. And, but people tend not to go into the high school much. You know, there are people who had kids there years and years ago, and the only time they go in is for that town meeting, and it truly shouldn't be that way. I think there are so many things that can be offered to the community and having them at Algonquin, for example, so that there's plenty of room for everybody. So that the town and the schools are seeing the same information and are seeing the same goals and and things that, let's say, your committee is trying to push forward. It shouldn't just be the schools or just residents. It should be everyone hearing the same message. So those were my quick notes, but I want to thank you all very much for your work. It's just fabulous.
Thank you, Leslie. Kristin Wixton?
Hi, thanks for everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. And I also, I know I've seen Leslie on the Facebook page. I also really enjoyed the Facebook page, so thank you, Sheikah, for sharing that with our community. I got a lot out of that. I love the idea that you mentioned during your presentation, Maryam. One of the first things you said was the town common, and another thing you said was changing the name of the Board of Selectmen, which has been important to me for a long time, and names are important and words are important and incorporating inclusive language and making it consistent through the town and the school is really, really good stuff. I, I also was just thinking while Leslie was talking, I was writing some notes about how the people who have seen the Facebook page and the people who have already demonstrated interest in your committee and gone to your drop-in session and everything are probably on board with pretty much everything you're doing. I'm wondering how we can reach the people who don't know that they will be on board with it when they hear about all the good things you're doing, but they haven't figured that out yet. Because basically, the theme of what you're doing here is what's best for people of color and people with disabilities and LGBTQ people and anybody who's not neurotypical. It's, it's best for everybody. It's best for the whole community, and I think I hope there's, there are ways that we can help you. We as a board can help you, and we can help our town realize that that's the case so that we all make everything better for all of us.
Thank you, Kristin. Other board members? Scott Rogers?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks to all of you for the work that you've done. You know, as Leslie mentioned, the report is fantastic in terms of the level of detail and the clearness of the recommendations, including, you know, specific actions that can be taken. I was also struck by the listening session. That, that venue, that activity, the more we can do to have people that are willing to share their experiences and educate me and others, that's really powerful stuff. I think another just fantastic thing you did is an outgrowth of interviewing with the different departments and committees. You're now have established, you know, a web, a community between those committees and departments, and I think you're going to be in a very influential and position to bring different committees and departments together and provide a consistent message across all these topics. So thank you for stitching together different aspects of what might be municipal government as you hopefully, you know, stitch together all the different aspects of the, of a community at large. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Scott. I'll just add my observations. It's been a very heavy workload for all of you. And we certainly appreciate the commitment that you all have had to join this committee and to work through it over the past year plus. I do find it, I have to say, as I go back through and think of some of the various meetings, the listening session meeting was at times difficult to listen to because some of the people who were calling in were sharing very personal and difficult experiences that they had encountered. And if there's perhaps even a single meeting that I would appoint to, to have anyone in the general public go look at, and ask them, maybe that's, that's one place to start. I also want to thank you all because as kind of like the the initial effort, there was a lot of different ideas, a lot of different avenues you had to kind of explore and try to grapple with and bring together in order to come to this set of recommendations that are, as other members have said, more specific, very focused, and certainly give us actionable things that we can now begin to address in the coming months. So thank you for that. And I agree, I think some of the interviews with town staff have been helpful on both sides to understand where we'd like to be in terms of diversity of our workforce and perhaps some of the practical realities of the available candidates in the labor pool. I know as, as a member of this board, having sat in on some of the interviews for police and fire department candidates, it's not, not frequently the case that you see a diversity of candidates, gender, color, whatever. It's unfortunate, but it is the reality. I do recall one particular interview slate for the fire department that did have a female candidate on it, and I was looking forward to interviewing that candidate. And on the day of the interview, it was, you know, it turned out to be the case that she had, she was one of two, I think, that had withdrawn their candidacy at that point. So we didn't have the opportunity to, to interview that candidate and perhaps make our case for North Borough to be the destination for her. So with that said, I'm happy to invite any questions you might have for us at this time. We have the recommendations, and as I said, we'll be working through those in the coming succession of meetings. But is there anything else you would like to add at this time? Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the only additional point I would make or additional recommendation I would make to the board is, as you go through your process and considering the recommendations, the sooner that you can make a decision on whether there's going to be a permanent committee would be most helpful. Just thinking through that process, you know, we obviously have to open the committee back up to interview the members, and after being on the interview subcommittee, you know, Leslie and I went through the interview process last time, and there was a very good turnout and interest in serving on the committee. So to get through that process is going to take some time. So while the interview subcommittee is going through that process, the Board of Selectmen at the same time could be considering the other recommendations. So that way, there's kind of a connection or meeting point between the committee starting again and the recommendations coming on board so that the committee and the Board of Selectmen can, can work together on the move in those recommendations that the board sees fit forward.
I think that's an excellent point. There are a number of recommendations, but perhaps the first one that this board should consider is the establishment of a standing committee for this purpose. So certainly point taken, Tim. Thank you.
Yeah. And can I just have one other thing?
Sure.
All the members of the board have commented on the thoroughness and the clarity of the the written recommendation document, and I just want to pass on that Becca did a lot of the work on that document. She is an absolute force of nature, and she did a wonderful job on that. She's, she knows what she's doing. She's, she's very good at her job, and we were very lucky to have her on the committee. And the recommendations, the meat of that, those recommendations came from Becca. So, you know, if you're going to thank anybody, please send her a special thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Very good. Julianne, yes?
Yeah, thank you. I would also like to express my appreciation for your time and hard work. And I'd also like to remind the residents that this information is online. If you just go to the Selectmen's agenda, the packet is on that page. So I look forward to everyone studying it and giving it a lot of thought because it's very far-reaching. And again, thank you to the committee.
Very good. If there's nothing more from the board members this evening? Excellent. Well, once again, just to close, thank you very much. This written recommendations, which is, as was mentioned, is much more detailed than what was in the slideshow tonight, will certainly take that up and expect to make some progress over the next succession of board meetings to address some of the points that you've raised here.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Tim, Maryam, Deidre, Sheikah, Virginia, and all the rest of the committee members who aren't present here this evening, Becca. Thank you all. Appreciate all the work you've done and look forward to hopefully your continued participation in the future going forward.
Thank you.
And everybody. Bye now.
Thank you.
Good night. Which next brings us to reports. We will begin with Kristin Wixton.
Yay. You guys love my reports. Come on. All right. So the Regional School Committee will vote on the new mascot in the next couple of weeks, and the big announcement will be on February 14th. My connection to the Regional School Committee told me this, and I'm just going to remind the Board of Selectmen that we have a meeting that night. So who knows? Maybe one of us will get a secret text message and be able to blurt it out. That'll be fun. Okay, the last five contenders are Eagles, Falcons, Norristers, Thunder, and Titans. The Community Affairs Committee is planning on a Kindness Week event, February 7th to 13th. With an event at the town common on Friday, February 11th, with free hot chocolate from Starbucks. More info on that coming soon from the CAC. In an effort to get our kindness more organized all year long, Suzie and I are making, Suzie, the chair of the committee, you guys all know Suzie. We're making a list of all the nonprofits in town for everyone to have a resource so that, you know, if you want to volunteer. so that, you know, if you want to volunteer or donate some supplies or money or whatever, some kind of kindness, we'll have a resource of all the different nonprofits in Northborough. I would love it if each of my fellow board members would choose a nonprofit during this period of time to support for Kindness Week, and we can all talk about it. It'd be great. The GSA Link is doing a fundraiser for their ment- mentorship program. That's Gay Straight Alliance, by the way. Speaking of nonprofits in town, I get their emails, and I just thought, I threw out a lot of Boy Scout stuff. I thought I would throw this out. It's, if you'd like to donate to them, it's gsa link.org. That's an easy one. The Scholarship Committee had a meeting in early January. They're working on a lot of stuff. They have to revamp a lot of things, but mainly fundraising and fundraising and promotion ideas, getting the word out about the scholarship, which is open to any high school senior in Northborough, including homeschooled students. I know returning to a hundred percent hybrid meetings since this last spike in COVID may not have been ideal for some, but it's good for many who can watch more easily from home. So, I'm hoping we'll continue to have these hybrid options for all our meetings in town, especially after the state law mandating them expires in March. I'm sure John will have something to say about that. In the spirit of, oh, here's my quote, "In the spirit of pulling papers and also of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee and everything they have to say, which isn't always the easiest thing." I have a quote for you from Brené Brown, "Vulnerability is not winning or losing. It's having the courage to show up and be seen when we have no control of the outcome." That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Next, Julianne Hirsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the first thing I'll report on is the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which met on January twentieth. DHB, which is the consulting firm we've been using all along, provided us with a draft scope of work for the preparation of a downtown vision plan. Some of the details that will be discussed in such plan would be defining the perimeter of what we consider downtown and transition zones, meetings with stakeholders and other public meetings and surveys, looking at transportation, looking at resources like utilities, natural resources, and historic characteristics. These are just a few of the things that will be evaluated for a downtown plan and required of wh- whomever the consultant is that we decide to hire. One of the longest discussions we had at the meeting was about whether or not to ask for a separate downtown development committee or whether the MPIC is willing to and able to take on that responsibility. It was ultimately decided that since the committee represents a broad section of interests and sections of town, the MPIC was the most effective way to move forward and not create another committee. This will all help, this will also help things move forward more quickly since creating another committee would basically be starting from scratch. And the MPIC thought that since current members are up to date with all of the information and the process, that this will help things move faster. Secondly, I attended a CMRPC meeting where they talked about setting goals for their whole program Imagine 2050 Plan. This meeting was about the environment and topics such as conservation zoning, renewable resources, infrastructure, as they relate to the environment, were discussed. I've noticed that there are a few commu- communities that are already writing their own specific climate action plans. And lastly, I have a an ask again that we have the opportunity to meet the facilities manager and hear what his first assessments of the town properties are. Clearly, if this is very important information as we move into our capital planning meetings. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Scott Rogers.
And thank you. The Library Board of Trustees met on January eleventh. Their meeting is available on Northborough Remote Meetings. There's been, I was able to, yeah, join the first part of that CMRPC. Wait, did I do that right? Those letters, right, Julianne? Anyway, I was with you in the beginning of that, as they did that that vision. That was interesting. I wasn't able to go in any of the breakout rooms. I had to leave before that part of the section, but it was interesting to to hear that as well. And then I always appreciate a police report. Usually, I put the chief labor on the spot. He doesn't have to comment on this, but my favorite part of that report is the both the jail and emergency, emergency department diversion and just just the 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 interception, the interaction of having a mental health clinician there on the scene. Amazing, not only for the the resident or the person in need, but just even the financial savings. So, I love that report. So, thank you for including that in the report. You don't have to comment. I always put you on the spot on this, so you you don't have to do it this time. That ends my report.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Leslie Rutan.
Something that Kristen had mentioned, I just want to tag on to with regard to the Scholarship Committee. I know that when we interviewed for new members for that committee, we did discuss fundraising. And the fact that because a lot of people are paying their tax bills online, I think there are fewer contributions, unlike the mail-in thing where you would just check it off and you add a little bit to your bill, your payment, and that kind of thing. So, I think there's a little bit of less of that going on. So, I know that they feel that they should probably undertake some more fundraising efforts. So, that's, I think that's great that they're undertaking that. That's a good committee. Is Scott sharpened here? Yes, Scott's on. Just wanted to ask him a quick question if I could. People are residents, I should say, are continuing to comment about the the lighting, the lights downtown. And wondering if we've been able to get anyone from Mass DOT to come down and take a look and and make some observations about whether any tweaks are needed with any of the lights. I know that they could be thrown off by pedestrians and so forth, but oftentimes when I'm down there, I'm not seeing any pedestrians or I didn't, you know, a couple of minutes prior to that or anything. And there are just some weird things going on with those lights sometimes that get very messy and strange, particularly at the intersection of twenty and Hudson and then twenty and one thirty-five and and the changes occasionally. So, do we have any?
Yeah, through the through the chair, the we reached out to Mass DOT probably about six or eight weeks ago when this first came up. It came out, they found a damaged loop det- loop detector. They did fix that over the one thirty-five, South Street intersection with the West Main Street. And when you mentioned the the throwing off of pedestrians, you have a pedestrian cross Route twenty or Church Street. It could take four or five light cycles, and light cycles are a good three or four minutes each. So, you're fifteen minutes before they kind of reset, and that's just the 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 timing of the lights to get back to normal. That doesn't clear the queue, you know, the traffic that's been backed up in one direction or another. So, you could end up with a twenty-minute correction period after a pedestrian crosses a one of the longer crosswalks like Church Street. So, we'll we'll, we we contact Mass DOT frequently. I talked to him recently about some signs that were placed out there. So, we'll be happy to reach out to them, make sure the timing is okay again.
Okay. I would love it if you did that because people continue to comment about that. I don't think that it's horrendous necessarily, and I haven't gotten a lot of details yet about what exactly they are seeing. But my best guess is right there in the center, you know, Hudson and one thirty-five and and then Church. I don't think Church is necessarily is is bad from from what I personally experienced, but the other two are, I know. So, if you wouldn't mind doing that, that would be great if we could, I could then say that that's going to happen. Someone get down there. Okay.
Be hap- be happy to reach out.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. I also wanted to just make mention again, please consider donating to the Food Pantry on Pier Street. And for information, visit nfpantry.org. And also donating to the Food Pantry at the American Legion in town. And for further information, I'm not sure if they have updated their website yet. I did make a comment about that to them. But visiting bcforty.org is where their food pantry is mentioned. Also, wanted to mention the committee vacancies that we have, and I'm assuming this list is up to date. I I pulled this off today. We have a vacancy on, excuse me, I'm going to read down through this. Community Affairs Committee, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, listed here are five vacancies. I I'm assuming this is current. Vacancy on Earthwork Board, vacancy on Financial Planning, three vacancies on Historic District Commission, vacancy on Library Trustees, vacancy on Municipal Code and Bylaw, vacancy on Registrar, one on Scholarship, and one on Trails Committee. So, there are lots of places where people can interview and and take part in their community on on a committee. That would be wonderful. We'd love to have you. And finally, I'm wondering if we could get a an update at some point about White Cliffs, what the last, the most recent meeting concluded with and what are next steps? People are beginning to comment about that as well. So, I'm wondering what this, what the status is on on that because I don't want there to be misinformation floating around out there about what's happening and what's going on in the building and is it secure? And, you know, is it just, you know, is there kind of any kind of mitigation going on to prevent deterioration, all those kinds of things? So, if we could have some sort of quick update on that, I greatly appreciate it. And that is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. I have no report this evening. John, anything?
Just a quick comment on the White Cliffs. Julianne Hirsch has been emailing me regularly wanting to get the committee going. We have had, we're doing some work behind the scenes. The short answer, as far as the building envelope, we spent a good amount of money to to button up the building envelope, keep the elements out. New roof, we boarded up and sealed up the building to keep the the water out. Norm Corbin has been working behind the scenes, trying to scare up information on potential consultants to help market the property. So, had a couple of discussions over the last last two or three weeks with several consultants, and we're getting ready to reconvene the committee to 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 basically decide on a potential consultant to assist the town to look at trying to put out an RFP and and see if we can't find a private sector partner. But our our Facilities Manager walks the building on at least a weekly basis, police on on every shift, drive-through. So, the building is being, you know, we're keeping tabs on the building. It's just going to be, you know, it, we knew when we bought the place that it was going to be a a long haul. If it was an easy solution, the previous owner would have found somebody who wanted to buy it and not tear it down. So, so, yeah, we'll we'll be reconvening shortly, and there should be some new information coming out. You're welcome. I do have just one thing from from Kristen Black, our our health agent. Some some positive news in the in the flurry of COVID that is the world at the moment. We were at, on January fourteenth, we had six hundred and forty-five active cases in town. And as of today, that number is down to three hundred and twenty-one, so down about half. So, it seems as though things may have peaked, and and hopefully we're on the other side of it. And and seems at this point, everybody's either completely vaccinated and boosted or they've had COVID. So, I think with any luck, it'll run out of places to go. But but that's good news for us. Some of the measures we've taken, the mask mandate that the Board of Health approved, and some of the other measures that we've done, I like to think had to help in mitigating that. But the other piece is it's really just, it's running its course. But but we appear to be down the other side of the the peak, and, you know, some good news there on the COVID front. So, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The next segment of our show is public comment, and so let me do the preliminaries for that. Public comment's an opportunity for member of the public to present any questions or concerns to the board. The board will not typically engage in deliberation or make any decisions about any matters. We'll take things under advisement. If there's a simple factual question that town staff might be able to answer readily, we will certainly strive to do that. We ask that members of the public conduct themselves in a professional and respectful and constructive way when presenting their concerns. We'll ask members of the public, when they come into the room, to first state their name and address, and you will have three minutes. So, having said all of that, if there are any members of the public, I do not see anyone on audio. So, any member of the public connected to the Zoom webinar who wishes to speak can raise their hand. Very well. Thank you. No members of the public wishing to participate this evening. Onto new business, and we have the next two items with, we'll take in reverse order at the Town Administrator's request because it makes for a more seamless presentation. So, John will begin with the update on state aid and then follow that with an update on preliminary free cash plan.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, typically, this is the time of year we get our first glimpse at state aid. You know, back in December, we had our financial trend monitoring meeting on December twentieth, on December twenty-first. The state had their revenue sharing consensus hearing. This is where they bring in all of the the Department of Revenue as well as several different economists. Moody's Analytics is a big factor in terms of doing the analysis on the economy. They try to get a sense of where state revenues are going to go. That is then used for consensus between the governor and the legislature with regard to budget building, what they anticipate the increase in state aid will be. And so, essentially, after the various ranges that were provided, and you can imagine there's somewhat certainty with regard to the economy and COVID and and vaccinations and and variants. So, there were a lot of hedging of the bets and cave- and caveats. But but essentially, the legislature and the governor have agreed upon a two-point-seven percent expected projected growth rate in state revenues. So, in your packet is some information. Basically, a- a- at the Mass Municipal Association Conference on Friday, it was actually Lieutenant Governor made the announcement that that the state will continue to honor its revenue sharing model, which is to allow unrestricted general government aid to municipalities to go up the same amount as the anticipated state revenues would be. So, our unrestricted general aid account, this is, this is non-school aid. So, essentially, it's lottery, those of you who have been around for a long time. It's lottery proceeds that were passed by the legislature with the support of the the voters to give revenues to local government. So, when they started to steal that during a prior prior recession, they changed it to unrestricted general government aid. So, nobody, they think nobody will remember what it was. But here's the thing I want people to take away from this. So, the unrestricted general government aid, the governor has agreed, will go up two-point-seven percent. The issue for us is, in its totality, you know, we get about five-point-four million dollars in state aid. Approximately twenty-two percent of that is unrestricted general government aid. And seventy-four percent of it is chapter, is chapter seventy-eight. So, unrestricted is is twenty-two, general government, I'm sorry, chapter seventy, education aid is seventy-four percent. So, every time somebody reads in a newspaper that the legislature or the governors made a commitment to allow unrestricted general aid to us, go up the same amount as they anticipate their state revenues will go up, sounds like we're going to receive, you know, two-point-seven percent. The reality is, we aren't going to see much in the way of chapter, chapter seventy, education aid because, and we've talked about this at multiple meetings in the past, the Student Opportunity Act that was passed a couple of years ago was designed to get additional revenue and divert additional state revenue to underperforming school systems. We are not one of those. So, there will be a significant amount of money dumped into or appropriated and allocated for chapter seventy, education aid. The town of Northborough and the regional high school is not likely to see much beyond a minimum increase. So, when you blend these things together, I presented back in December twentieth that we are, for budget modeling purposes, we're assuming we'll get about a one percent increase in state aid. That appears to be on track. At the end of the day, we may see one and a half, maybe even two percent. So, you're talking about, you know, So you're talking about, you know, thirty, forty to sixty thousand dollars at most delta. On a five and a half, five-point-four million dollar account. So, so at this point. It's not bad news, but it's pretty much exactly what we expected. And the governor will release his budget on January twenty-sixth. That'll be our first glimpse really at, at our, a real, the accounts themselves. The only thing beyond that is until the cherry sheets get released, and that's the detail about our, our state aid. Both on the revenue side, but also on the assessments, until we see how much they're giving us and then how much our assessments are going up. It's really the net of those two things. So, so sometimes your state aid can go up two or three percent. But if your assessments go up, you know, two percent, the net impact is really only about a percent better. So we watch all that stuff. But the bottom line is, it's good that the governor and the legislature appear to be honoring the two-and-a-half percent. Unrestricted general government aid. But in the global picture, in terms of state aid, that five-point-four million that we received. We're not going to see much beyond the one percent that we're modeling at the moment. And just as a reminder, if in fact, we do get additional state aid. If we build our budget, we go to town, town meeting and we don't have our final state aid numbers. That little bit that we receive, you know, typically a thirty thousand, forty thousand at most more, that can only be used to reduce the tax rate. Unfortunately, you know, we go to town meeting, our budget has to be set by April. It's not uncommon for us to receive our state aid, our final state aid, you know, two, three, six months after, you know, after our town meeting. So it's important to be realistic and conservative with that number. But basically, it looks like what we had forecast for you back in December is going to come to fruition. So that's where we are with state aid. Happy to answer any questions anybody may have with regard to that.
Members of the board, any questions? John, I would ask, you'd mentioned the, the mentioned increase for UGGA, but any outlook on assessments?
No. We don't, we don't have any, we won't have any sense until we get those cherry sheets. And quite frankly, the governors. The governors' assessments usually are just whatever the assessments were for last year. You know, a big component of that is oftentimes. The back charges for charter schools. And those numbers can swing wildly depending on, you know, how many kids go. But that number can swing, you know, hundreds or two-hundred thousand dollars at times. And they won't have those figures until a little bit further along in the, in the process, so.
And did I correctly see the Governor Baker announcing his support for two-hundred million of chapter ninety?
Yeah, that was a little disappointing. As you all well know, it's been a top priority in legislative priority of the town of Northborough. It's also been a top priority of the Mass Municipal Association to get that statewide number up from two-hundred million to three-hundred million. The evidence for it and the need for it is tremendous. And just for those at home that may be watching. So chapter ninety funds are transportation funds. They come, they come through a bond issuance at the state level. And there's a formula based on road miles and a few other factors. And it gets distributed to municipalities. And in some towns, that's the only money that's used to do roadwork. In Northborough, it's about five hundred and maybe five-hundred-forty, five-hundred-fifty thousand dollars. On a typical year for us. And we augment that with appropriations under the capital plan and the operating budget. To get the investment to one-point-one million. And as you know, we've really struggled on our infrastructure. And that is, again, a top priority for us. What we're looking for is if the, if the governor would and the legislature would agree to increase that. To three-hundred million statewide, Northwood would pick up another maybe three-hundred thousand dollars. And that would be the difference between, you know, the one-point-one that we appropriate every year under those three sources. And, you know, getting that number up to, you know, one-point-four or closer to one-point-five. We've struggled with, with keeping. The pavement condition index, you know, moving in a positive direction. We're not losing ground, but we're not making up as much ground as we'd like. We're somewhere around about a seventy-three. That's a grade for all of our roadways on, and it's about an average. So that's desperately needed. Huge lobby for that. Lots of evidence provided, lots of testimony provided. Our pavement management plan, we actually able to forward that to the MMA and they use that in their discussions to show what the funding needs were. In Northborough and other communities. But, you know, it's unfortunately didn't come to fruition. So we're looking at another two-hundred million this year. We were hoping with all the infrastructure money and the ARPA money that's floating around, that some of it would see its way into chapter ninety. We were working with the MMA. As you know, I serve on the Fiscal Policy Committee for MMA. And we were had some representatives that were offering and will offer amendments to increase that. But, but it remains to be seen what will ultimately happen. So for now, it looks like we're stuck with the level of funding that we've had for. Boy, I tell you, almost as long as I care, it's at least, you know, it's, it's well over a decade. And, you know, obviously, the price of asphalt and labor has clearly gone up over the years. So, you know, it continues to, to shrink, you know, because it's a time value of money. And it's, it's a problem. And it's a problem for everybody. So we'll continue to lobby on that. When we do have our legislative delegation in, I'm sure you can remind them all how important it is to us. But unfortunately, it doesn't look like on that front, we're going to see much assistance. So.
Thank you, John. Julian? You're muted, Julian.
Yeah, thank you. Speaking of how much those costs have been going up over the years, this, this past year. And specifically with the inflation we're seeing, are you assuming that the costs are going to be much greater? With, with chapter ninety, with roadway improvements?
Yeah, we're going to be seeing some increases, you know, especially it, it, the asphalt is a petroleum-based product. So when the price of oil goes up, you know, you're going to see that go up. And of course, you know, labor costs have normal annual increases. But yeah, we're anticipating the costs will go up. Scott, I don't know through the chair, if you, he popped back on, so he may have some information.
I just put it in perspective a little bit. So chapter ninety was funded at two-hundred million dollars in two thousand and twelve. And in two thousand and twelve, the cost of asphalt in place per ton was about fifty-five dollars. Our current contract is eighty dollars per ton in place. That was from last year and that, that's, that's pre asphalt escalation. So this year, I'm expecting to see something in the eighty-five to ninety-dollar a ton range. So that's up for fifty-five dollars. The buying power of two-hundred million dollars is absolutely not what it was a decade ago. So it's, it's a challenge to, to, to stretch that money as far as we can.
Thank you, Scott.
And, you know, infrastructure costs, roadways, culverts, drainage, sidewalks. I mean, this is the, this is where. You know, we're struggling. I, I mean, I'm happy to say that at least we made a commitment about five, five years, maybe five or six years ago. To study the problem and to map out funding plans. And we dedicated one-point-one million dollars, you know, every year over the, over that timeframe. Prior to that, we were just only using our chapter ninety fund. So we really, we looked at the, the issue, we created a plan, we got consensus on all the boards and committees. About as our debt service went down, we took the money that we were spending on financing, you know, equipment and stuff. Moved it over into the operating budget for DPW. And we have consistently put, you know, one-point-one million dollars into our roadways. And in the beginning, it was great, but, but the point's well taken. You know, the buying power has diminished. And that continues to be an area that we struggle with. And frankly, I don't know any community that isn't struggling with. With infrastructure costs and roadway, roadway maintenance. So some are doing better than others. We're holding our own. But we're kind of getting to the point where we, we're going to need some infusion of money to, to, to get that level back up. In terms of relative buying power again. That's definitely something to be looking at over the next couple of years.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Leslie?
John, is it, is there any kind of acknowledgement that yes, this is definitely a need and we just simply can't afford it? Or is there some sort of rebuttal that's made and it's just not a priority?
Well, my suspicion is that. If the money goes into chapter ninety, if they just raise it to three hundred, then it just becomes a program that becomes part of our, our base. And we use it and we move forward. What the legislature and most administrations like to do is, if they have additional funds. And if they have additional infrastructure funds, they like to create new programs that they can roll out and get publicity over. And so you've seen, you know, some of these are helpful, you know, complete streets is one that we talked about at your last meeting. There's a small bridge and covert programs. We have, and Scott and I have sat and met on every time one of those programs rolls out, we go through them to see if we would be eligible. Unfortunately, like a lot of these programs, you know, they're, they're targeted towards the most needy infrastructure. And the most needy communities. And so more often than not, we just find ourselves not. Because they're typically competitive grants. And so we find ourselves not, not being competitive. Because of the social demographics of, of the town by and large. So, so that's really what happens. And so we keep asking, it was my big push on the Fiscal Policy Committee. To push back to the state to say, you know, all these infrastructure funds and these ARPA funds that are coming through, instead of creating a whole bunch of new programs. Put it through existing programs. And chapter ninety was the one that we really strongly advocated for. But then there were other, my other colleagues who work in other communities with different socioeconomic backgrounds. You know, they were quick to point out that, you know, they need the money more than Northborough or Lexington needs the money. And that, that they should be more needs-based. And, you know, from a public policy standpoint. You know, I get that, but, you know, a, a rising, a rising tide, you know, lifts all boats. Really, it, it really needs to, at, at the base level for chapter ninety, it's long overdue for the state to move it to three hundred million. They just, they would rather take the money or the capacity and do new programs or things that get a little bit more attention. Things are a little more flashy. That's my, that's my, my personal assessment of that.
Thank you, John. Kristen?
So if the, if the state is, is, it sounds, it sounds like. The state would rather make municipal employees jump through hoops so that they can look good on the other end. Then just give you the money in a way that's more efficient. That's, that's what it sounds like to me, which, you know, I mean, that. I'm, I'm, like I said, the new kid, so that, that doesn't surprise me. But I wonder. And if this is an inappropriate question, just shut me right down. But if we, if we were to say maybe get a new governor. Is it possible that it might change next year? Because I know Baker's not running again.
Yeah, it's, every, every year, every year, it's up for discussion. And every year, it's a policy decision that gets made. And there's always the possibility that it can change. There was one year when, actually, when, when Governor Baker came in. Working with Deval Patrick, Deval Patrick, there was a, I think it was twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Where there was an extra hundred, hundred million that was allocated. And then when Charlie, Charlie Baker came in as governor, he released it. And so one year, we had three hundred million. And this is going back now to his very first term. So seven years ago or so. And so of course, we were like, final, finally, we're at three hundred million. And then literally the next cycle went right back to two, two hundred million. And MMA got involved, everybody was protesting. And I think, again, I go back to every administration in legislature likes to, they like earmarks, they like new programs. They like things that they can, you know, talk about and, and roll out. And what we really need is just a base budget increase. Of, you know, a hundred million across the Commonwealth for just basic roadway infrastructure management. And for what, it just, just hasn't been forthcoming. So it's frustrating. So.
They favor the perception of doing something as opposed to.
Well, you know, a- a- again, you know, we, sometimes you, you do have to accept the fact that we are not a, you know, a census tract. You know, community, we are a fairly well-off community that's managed itself well. And, and a lot of the programs, these new programs, we just talked about the Student Opportunity Act. All the money in the state, all the extra revenue at the state, for the foreseeable future is going to get dumped into that. Remember, we talked about it when they first discussed it. And it just, our concern was that our existing state aid would get actually siphoned off. To honor that, that new act. But the reality is, you know, all the new revenues, that's where it's going. It's going to the, to the big cities. And, you know, it's, on the one hand, you understand from a public policy standpoint, you know, a redistribution, redistribution to where the needs are. But, you know, when it comes to education and infrastructure, the basic foundation of all the communities. You know, needs to be lifted up. And then certainly additional programs for specific communities that don't have the tax base that, that we have. But it, it's frustrating. Because then you're always seeing programs too, where you're like, well, that's just plain silly. Why are you creating another program there? Just put it through an existing program. So that's, you know, that's to be watched. You know, you've got the infrastructure bill coming through the federal level, it's going to flow through the state. State has said or indicated that they, you know, they're going to use mostly existing programs. The state has five-point-three billion dollars in ARPA funding. You know, how are they going to use that? I mean, of all this money, you would think somewhere, somehow, then get a little bit more of it to roadway programs for desperate need. But we'll see, we'll see. It's not going to come in chapter ninety, apparently.
Certainly not this year.
Not this year.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Shall we proceed to the preliminary free cash plan?
Yes, I'm going to share my screen. All right. So every year, we get our free cash certified. And free cash in its most rudimentary form is appropriations. From the prior closed-out fiscal year that weren't expended in revenues that came in above what we had forecast. And so in terms of, and a free cash that we're talking about is from fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Now, what's always tough for people to follow is we're closing out fiscal twenty twenty-one, we're in fiscal twenty twenty-two. And we're planning for fiscal twenty twenty-three. So the closed-out remaining revenues or, or resources from fiscal twenty-one. Will be what we're talking about for use in fiscal twenty twenty-two. So that's, that, it's always that, that skip in terms of fiscal budgets. In terms of recapping fiscal twenty twenty-one, we talked about this.
You, you meant for use in twenty twenty-three, right?
What did I say?
I think you said twenty twenty-one, money from twenty twenty-one.
I'm working, you know, I'm working in too many fiscal years right now. Like literally, I can't, sometimes I don't know what year you got. We close out fiscal twenty-one, we're in twenty-two, we're preparing for fiscal twenty twenty-three and beyond. So yeah, so what's closed out in fiscal twenty-one, in terms of free cash, is what's available for appropriation in fiscal twenty twenty-three. The fiscal year we're working on now. So in terms of the free cash, it was certified. The last time we met, this just got certified about a, a week or two ago. But the last time we met in December, it was not yet certified. The final number is three, three million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars. So roughly three-point-four million dollars. Bear with me, the slide. I don't know, I'm experiencing some technical difficulties. Please just bear with me, the slide one. Advance.
John, you might want to stop sharing and then.
Yeah, let me stop and try again. Sorry about that, guys.
I think I've seen this happen before in Zoom sessions with presentations sometimes.
It happens. All right. Sorry about that, guys. So just getting back certified free cash, three-point-four million dollars roughly. These slides should look familiar to you. We discussed these in the trend monitoring. As I said, free cash comes from revenues that come in above what we. Uh, as I said, free cash comes from, uh, uh, revenues that come in above what we had forecast and expenditures below what we had appropriated. So for fiscal twenty one, our revenues, uh, came back, came in at about two point eight percent above what we had forecast. Which resulted in about one point seven eight million dollars, uh, then in, uh, revenues above, uh, budgeted. And, uh, as you know, when we set this budget, we're in the middle of pandemic, uh, very conservative revenue estimates. And, uh, as the economy opened back up, we saw, uh, a healthy, uh, increase in the revenues towards the end, just like the, uh, state. Uh, did in terms of their revenues. With regard to expenditures, uh, we saw two point four, two percent, uh, turn back, uh, these are unexpended appropriations. And, uh, the line share of that, if you remember, we set aside, uh, significant money from free cash into our emergency reserve account, which we did not need to use. We also had a mild winter, uh, that year and we saw some pretty good numbers, uh, in the final renewals on our employee health insurance. Um, obviously, uh, any budgets that we used in, or any budgets that were set relative to the pandemic. We were pretty much able to, uh, take advantage of FEMA and grant funding to take care of our, our COVID response. Uh, but again, that came, uh, the expenditures are about two point four percent. Typically, um, our budgets, we want to see, and you've heard our auditor come in and speak to you on a regular, on an annual basis. And, uh, he would say, you know, if you can get, you know, two to three percent, two to three percent of revenues, two to three percent of expenditures. That's, that's really why where you wanna be. Uh, if you're any closer than that, uh, you're really, um. Some of it's just dumb, dumb luck and, uh, uh, just to put it in a perspective. It's not uncommon if we get one large, uh, building permit that comes in, if you look under revenues, licenses and permits. You know, uh, three hundred ninety eight, uh, thousand variants, it's because we had one very large building permit in there. Um, so, um, you can't get too much closer and in terms of the pandemic, it was pretty good, but. It has resulted in, uh, I wouldn't say it's record, uh, free cash, but it's certainly, uh, healthy free cash, so. This chart you've also seen before, you see it every year and I showed it to you at the financial trend monitoring presentation. Uh, it's a thirty one year history of free cash and really you wanna focus on the last, you know, five to ten years, cause that's our most recent. Um, our most recent experience, I always do like to show the whole thing because all the way on the left is negative free cash. And that is when you finish the fiscal year out and you are in the red, you don't ever, ever wanna be below that line and be negative, that is really bad. Um, so we haven't had that happen to us in a very long time. But you can see that free cash, uh, budget surplus, when you close out a fiscal year, it bounces all around in very, in general terms. It tends to, uh, to, uh, mirror what's happening with the economic cycle, so. Most of the revenues that come in above what we have forecast, they tend to be the elastic revenues that are economically driven, so. Motor vehicle excise, hotel and meals tax, building permits, those are the things that really move. Our, uh, particularly our local receipts up and down. And, um, like I said, it's very difficult to predict, you know, if a large building project is going to come or not, and that can swing, uh, these numbers. The other thing is, uh, motor vehicle excise is a big, uh, revenue source for us. And, uh, that's a, a tax that's collected by the state on behalf of the town and, uh, and remitted back to us. We don't really know what our, uh, motor vehicle excise tax, uh, revenues are gonna do. Usually it's, excuse me, the main commitment comes in around February, so, um, so that number. Uh, again, tends to be economically driven, um, but you can see here, uh, free cash about three point four percent. Uh, up last year, it was down, uh, due to the pandemic. So those numbers will bounce around. It is a very unstable erratic. Revenue source and that's why we treat it as a one-time revenue source and, uh, we don't want to. We wanna make sure that we limit the amount of one-time revenues in the operating budget. Because if we can't replicate or the economy slows down or there's a pandemic or some other thing that interrupts the economy. You find yourself, uh, short of free cash and you find yourself short of free cash, under our policy. We have the ability to move around and maneuver. So our free cash policy, uh.
Can, can you step back to that chart for a sec?
I certainly can, yes.
Uh, I just wanna point out that downturn in two thousand, uh, two thousand and seven, right?
Yes.
Le- leading up to that, we'd had relatively healthy free cash amounts. It was also during that period where we, uh, tended to, uh, apply something on the order of a million dollars a year back.
One point four million was our peak.
Right, and so, um, the problem, of course, when you get accustomed to enjoying that infusion. Is that you get a year like two thousand and seven where you don't generate that free cash. And now you're left in a, in a deficit position, uh, with your budget.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great point, so that, that recession. Where we were using upwards of, uh, a million, a million four in the operating budget and I was just rolling it forward. When the economy went into a recession, uh, we didn't generate that free cash. And so we were in a position where we were cutting services, we had to cut a million dollars out of the operating budget. Uh, out of that, um, right around then I took over as a town administrator. And we brought forward this free cash policy and the free cash policy is designed to. Limit your reliance on those one-time revenues in the operating budget. And also to strengthen the ta- the town's position by using them primarily for one-time expenditures, so. Under the free cash, uh, policy, there are specific uses that, uh, this money can be used for. One is, uh, the appropriated reserve account, this is our emergency account during the fiscal year. Um, it's controlled by the appropriations committee, it, it typically is a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, during the pandemic, we increased that to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, and we didn't need to use any of that, that's one of the reasons why we had healthy free cash, cause most of that closed back out. Uh, next is the operating budget, as I said, we used to have a, you know, upwards of a million point four in the operating budget. And the policy had, uh, the goal of reducing our reliance on those one-time revenues by. A thousand dollars each year until we hit the, the policy mark of, of a half a million dollars. And a half million dollars is, uh, around and slightly, maybe slightly less than one percent of the operating budget. So it really limited our, our liability there because we generally will, uh. Will end the fiscal year with at least a million dollars of, of free cash. Um, the other place that, uh, money can be used is to capitalize our stabilization fund, this is our rainy day account. Uh, this is, uh, this is our merge, our real emergency, our long-range emergency account. If the pandemic, uh, continued and if the federal government did not come through with assistance, we would have tapped into. Our, uh, stabilization fund and is, uh, uh, somewhere around five, five point four million dollars in that stabilization account right now. Uh, and we have typically on an annual basis, we would make appropriations into that. Uh, for the last two years, fiscal twenty one and fiscal twenty two, because of the pandemic, we have been unable to do that. And that's something we need to get back to. Think of it as your savings account in your personal life, you know, things go bad. And something happens, you don't, you're unable to contribute to your savings account, if it's really bad, you start drawing from it. We didn't have to draw from ours, but we have not been, that we have been unable to contribute for the last two fiscal years. The big star of this whole fiscal, uh, this, um, free cash policy is the capital improvement program. Uh, the line share of the, uh, free cash on annual basis has been used to do a pay-as-you-go. Uh, capital and that has been incredible for us because, uh, rather than financing with debt, you know, uh, equipment. Uh, trucks, things of that nature, we have, uh, since twenty twelve. Paid pretty much cash for all of our equipment, uh, needs. And that has reduced our level of debt, if you remember from the financial trend monitoring. Our level of debt service is around four point three percent, it's below five percent. Uh, you know, so we've paid off our debt and we're in a good position to take on. Debt for the upcoming, uh, fire station building project, so. Again, you pay off your debt, you get yourself in a good position for the next big project, which we are. We've done this previously with the Lincoln Street Elementary School back in, uh, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Uh, so that debt service is at a very, very low number for us and so we're in great position to, to do something, uh, for the next building project. But in terms of the capital improvement program, um, in fiscal twenty one, as you recall. Uh, we had to cut back because of the pandemic. In fiscal twenty twenty two, we didn't ha- finish the year out with tremendous free cash again because of the lingering impacts of. Of, uh, the pandemic and COVID on the economy. So for the last two years, we have not invested in the pay-as-you-go capital like we normally would. And essentially what we've done is we created a bubble of capital projects that are sitting out there that need to be, uh, funded. Now, this was done on purpose, uh, we postponed our capital investments to free up some liquidity to deal with the pandemic. Now that we have, uh, other funding sources and federal assistance. We need to get back to getting back on track with that capital improvement program and that's something we'll talk about in the next, uh, uh. In the next presentation on the ARPA funds. Um, the other, a couple of things, extraordinary deficits, um, you know, if we had a year with a lot of storms and ice, uh, hurricanes, tornadoes. You know, extra- extraordinary deficits, uh, we could use free cash to, uh, take care of those. And then last but not least, emergency appropriations and to allow for fiscal flexibility. That's essentially what we did during the pandemic, we used that free cash. Uh, and put it into the, uh, appropriated reserve account so that we had money at our fingertips without having to go to town meeting. To deal with any impacts of the pandemic, uh, if federal assistance, uh, didn't come through. So the way the policy works is each year our free cash gets certified, this year it's at three point four million. Uh, my job is to, uh, put a preliminary free cash plan together. In accordance with this policy that does a couple of things, one. We know we're gonna spend the money in these categories and not take, you know, three point four million thousand roll of the operating budget, that would be very bad. Create a massive structural deficit. Um, but the other thing is, is to use up the free cash in a way that's planned. That leaves enough so that our financial reserves, our financial reserve ratios. Are still where they want to be between eight and ten percent. So this is the preliminary free cash plan for fiscal twenty twenty three. The top line you can see is the three point four million dollars in certified free cash from the close fiscal twenty one. The appropriated reserve account, this is the emergency account within the fiscal year. It's a separate warrant article that's approved by town meeting every year, hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Um, we will roll forward a half a million dollars into the operating budget per the policy. Again, it maintains it at, uh, you know, roughly one percent of the operating budget, a very manageable amount. Um, stabilization fund, I mentioned that fiscal twenty one and twenty two, we were unable. Uh, because we didn't have the funds to put into our savings account or rainy day fund. In fiscal twenty three, um, the goal is to get back to that, so this preliminary plan has us contributing back to our stabilization fund. And one of the things to keep in mind is. Uh, if you have your, uh, emergency fund, uh, and it's a, it's at a relatively stagnant level. When our budgets increase every year by about four percent, if that stabilization fund is not added to. As a percentage of the operating budget, it will decline, so it might be eight or nine percent and then over the years you'll see it drop down to seven. If you don't make contributions to it, as a percentage of the budget, you will fall out of the policy ratio, which is. You know, uh, five to ten percent, we really wanna be around, the bond rating agencies. Want to see our financial reserves around, uh, eight to ten percent, closer to ten percent. And our financial reserves are, are free cash, that's un- unexpended in our stabilization fund. So in twenty twenty three, uh, the plan would, uh, include a contribution to that fund. And then, um, uh, last but not least, we talked about capital projects, we have. Uh, approximately two million dollars in pay-as-you-go capital that we can expend in compliance with our free cash. Uh, policy. Now that's important because in fiscal twenty one and fiscal twenty two. That capital investment was down around, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars. So we've had two years of diminished pay-as-you-go capital, um, and given everything and all the uncertainty with the pandemic. We really have hit the pause button for two years largely on our capital investment. And, uh, again, creating a bubble that we need to get back to and address. So this is the free cash plan, the last thing I draw your attention to is. We don't spend every bit of the money in of free cash, we leave, uh, available, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. And that's just been our practice really since fiscal twelve and the reason and the rationale for that is. That's money that's left essentially in the checking account. And, uh, think about if, if the, if the current fiscal year twenty two ends horribly wrong. And we had, generate little to no free cash, we have at least five hundred thousand, which is the amount that we typically use in the operating budget. So you have a year cushion to figure out what you're going to do. So the idea is, so if the economy, uh, takes a turn for the worse, if there's a pandemic, if there's a storm. If there's a major budget impact to us, all of our financial plans and models. Uh, have the goal of giving us flexibility, we try to buy ourselves a fiscal year. Uh, to maneuver, to make structural changes to the way we do, uh, our budgets. To find new revenue sources, to wait for aid to come from FEMA or MEMA or the federal government or the state. Um, and, and so when the pandemic hit, that's why we knew we were gonna delay capital. We're gonna postpone our OPEB trust fund contribution. And so when the, uh, pandemic hit, we weren't cutting the services that the residents, uh, came to, have come to count on. And not only did we maintain our services, but we actually were able to provide a tax reduction of sixty five dollars on the average single-family home. So again, all this pre-planning worked out perfectly. So in terms of this evening, there's no vote that's required, uh, by the board of selectmen. This policy requires me to put this together for, uh, for planning purposes. And so now the, uh, financial planning committee will be meeting to review the capital requests for this year. And they know that the pay-as-you-go target number is approximately two million dollars. And so they'll be working through the capital requests and, uh, and compiling those for further consideration. And the last thing I would mention is, uh, ultimately, uh, the, this is a preliminary plan. Um, it's based on the, the, the policy and the model that we have used, again, going back to fiscal twenty twelve that served us well. Um, ultimately, all of these spending lines will be approved by town meeting under separate warrant articles. So it goes through appropriations committee, it goes through the financial planning committee. Uh, the board of selectmen will often make recommendation as well and then town meeting would approve them. So it's not as though this evening, this is the plan, but this is roughly the outline and again. The capital project amounts won't always line up down to the exact, you know, two hundred fifty nine dollars at the bottom. So things will get rounded, uh, along those lines, but in general, this is the plan that we would be looking to follow. So, uh, in your, uh, in your handout in, uh, the packet that is on the website, if anybody wants to follow along. I actually included the prior year, the two prior year fiscal, uh, uh, capital, um, free cash plans. And, uh, as well as, uh, for somebody who doesn't have a lot of background in municipal finance. There's an introduction to free cash where, uh, we explain what, what is free cash, why is it a one-time revenue? Um, again, give the history of it, what are the acceptable uses, the difference between the free cash policy and the free cash plan. And then also there is the excerpt from the, um. Financial, uh, policies that explains, you know, how it's used and why we try to limit one-time revenues in the operating budget, so. I know that's a bit of information there, uh, but, uh, I'm certainly, uh, happy to answer any questions anybody ha- may have with regard to free cash. Other than the fact that it's not free and it's not cash. If you, uh, you know, if you work anywhere else, this is what you would call your unreserved, undesignedated fund balance. Only in Massachusetts do they call it free cash, which is a bit of a misnomer, uh, in the financial world, so.
Thank you, John. Uh, members of the board, any, uh, questions or comments?
Yeah, just a cheer, just a quick question. Uh, John, have you, uh, set a target date for a financial planning committee?
Uh, we've got a, uh, an inquiry out, uh, to get them, uh, get them rolling. As you know, uh, everything is running behind, our free cash is normally certified in October. Um, yeah, we're just with the, with the change in our auditor and all of the, uh, COVID. All the grant administration and everything, the, the certification is just running behind, so everything's running a little bit behind at the moment.
And Julian, did you have a question?
Yes, um, currently, how much money is in the appropriated reserve account? Yes, um, currently, how much money is in the appropriated reserve account?
Uh, um, for the current fiscal year, a hundred seventy-five thousand. The appropriated reserve, again, just to, just to make sure that everybody understands. Uh, each year when the budgets are approved. There's a separate warrant article that puts a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in. And it's under the control of the appropriations committee. So in, in the current year, so we're in the middle of the winter. I'd say probably eight times out of ten. Uh, that money, if needed, would be used to deal with a storm, uh, impacts. A really bad winter or storm impacts, uh, but it would be only be used, so it's sitting in that account. And it's only used if we need it and the appropriations committee releases it. If we don't use it. It just closes back out to free cash. So in fiscal twenty twenty-two. And this, that's why it's a great use of free cash because you just, you take it from free cash, you set it aside, and if you don't use it. It rolls back to free cash. One of the reasons why. The fiscal twenty-one free cash was, number was, was high is because we put. Three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars into the appropriated reserve, not knowing if we would need it for the pandemic. And ultimately, we didn't need it and we had a mild winter. And so all but forty-five thousand dollars that closed back out and is back in this free cash number. So if you look in the, if you look in the memo I provided, I tried to make the distinction between how much we generated. Uh, in revenues and unexpended, uh, appropriations. Versus what we were sitting on in existing free cash. And so we generated about two point eight million dollars, but. In total, it takes that number down here, that five hundred thousand at the bottom of this table right here. You know, we aren't going to spend that either unless something goes horribly wrong. You know, that rolls right back into next year's free cash. You know, so think about it as, probably the best way to think about it as. Free cash, the money that's left here, this five hundred thousand, think of that as your checking account, you might need access to it. Stabilization fund is your savings account, right? And then the appropriated reserve account is the little bit of money that you have on hand, uh, maybe hanging around the house. So if something goes wrong, you have quick access to it. Just scaled up to, you know, a seventy billion dollar budget. So these numbers look bigger. Um, but essentially if that appropriated reserve, uh, is not, it's appropriated every year. And if it's not spent, it closes right out and goes back to free cash.
Okay, thank you.
I know I'm throwing a, you know, a lot of numbers, and we've got folks that have been doing this for, you know, a decade, uh, and they know the, the drill. Um, but these are important concepts because these are, these are all the things that, that were put in place. Every year that allowed us to maneuver through this pandemic without slashing services, laying off employees, doing anything. You know, anything, uh. Uh, knee jerk in terms of a reaction. Alright, so that's all I have on the free cash plan. Ultimately. Uh, all of these will be warrant articles. And all the capital projects will be warrant articles recommended by financial planning and approved at town meeting. Okay. So that's it on, uh, the free cash plan. As we move through the, the final budget process, all that stuff will get, uh, finalized and like I said, find their way into warrant articles for approval.
Very good. Thank you, John.
Alright.
Uh, next up, we have the update on ARPA funds.
Alright, so I, I know it was requested, uh, at the last, uh, meeting, uh, to get an update on where the ARPA funds are. Uh, this is all unfolding in real time, as you know. Um, in your packet, I included a link to, uh, a copy of an article. On the Mass Municipal Association website that has links to the final rules and, and all of the information. Uh, that's out there. Uh, but for tonight, uh, I did want to kind of run through. Uh, a quick presentation and, uh, the agenda that I'm looking to follow is, uh, to give a little bit of an overview of ARPA. But let me come back to this because we have a lot of, um, a lot of acronyms that float around. ARPA stands for the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, that's the CLFRF. And you'll refer to that oftentimes as the recovery, local recovery fund. So we give an overview of those. Um, we're gonna cover the funding categories and eligible, eligible uses for ARPA funds. And it's important to note that the final rule from the US Treasury. Was just released on January sixth. We've been operating under interim rule and some very important changes and, and came out in that final rule. Uh, one of which we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about tonight, and that is the new revenue replacement allowance. As well as the implications of that change for us and how we potentially use our ARPA funding. I'm gonna give a little bit of an update on the status of our pandemic response. Uh, requests that we've received through departments and boards and committees to date. And then, uh, talk about the ARPA process, uh, moving forward. So in terms of what ARPA is, it's a one point, one point nine trillion dollar, uh, American Rescue Plan Act. This was signed. Uh, it's a law by President Biden on March eleventh of twenty twenty-one. Uh, although it was signed, there was no guidance or very little of any guidance that was out there for many more months. And then once the guidance came out, there were more questions than answers. And so they have gone through a long series of, of questions and answers and taken public comments. Uh, to come up with the final rules, which were just released, as I said, on January ninth. Essentially, uh, ARPA is, uh, designed to provide resources. Uh, for us to respond to the public health emergency that's caused by COVID nineteen. And it is administered by the US Department of Treasury, which we refer to as the Treasury Department. Um, it's important distinction because these funds are not going to the state. And then the state, uh, divvying the funds up to the municipality. You know, under other funding sources like the CARES Act, that was money that went through the state and then the state designed the program. And the correct, a lot of the criteria and the reporting that was needed, uh, to access those funds. The money flows to the state, the state is required to disperse that money to the municipalities. They can't put any strings on it. And they can't hold it up. Uh, and now, so that's good and bad. It means we get direct access to that money. But it also means that the town of Northborough is responsible for complying with all the requirements of ARPA. In terms of its eligible expenditures and all the reporting, the state isn't going to play big brother on this, uh, particular grant. So we, it's, it's the Northborough interacting directly with the US Treasury. And that's the distinction. Of the difference between ARPA funds versus, you know, prior, uh, Administration Care Act, uh, uh, funding. So the objectives of ARPA is to support, you know, the urgent response, uh, decrease the spread of the virus, bring the pandemic under control. Uh, to replace lost revenue, as you know, you, we've had many conversations over the last two years about. You know, motor vehicle, hotel meals tax, when the economy shut down, we lost revenue. This is in part is intended to replace some of that lost revenue to keep. Uh, local governments and state governments functioning, uh, while we work our way through, you know, the pandemic. Um, and it's also intended to support, you know, economic stabilization for households and businesses. And then the last thing is, uh, like many components of these types of programs. You know, address systemic public needs and economic challenges, uh, on, uh, due to unequal impact of pandemic. So. There's big components of this, uh, that are applicable for, especially for cities that have census tract. Disproportionately impacted neighborhoods and things of that nature. Northborough doesn't have much of that, uh, or any of that. We have no census tract, uh, neighborhoods. Um, but there's a big component at the federal level to make sure that these resources reach those that were impacted. So one point nine trillion dollars is a lot of money. I'm gonna kind of break it down. I'm gonna funnel it down so you understand how it gets to. The town of Northborough and what our funding amount is. So of the one point nine trillion, three hundred fifty billion was dedicated. For local governments and state government relief. And it's, um, and then. Within that local government money, that three hundred fifty billion. Are nineteen point five billion, uh, that are dedicated towards what are called non-entitlement units. And so I just want you to understand, and I want everybody to hear this because. There's so many numbers that are floating around and I want to give some context for these. So a non-entitlement unit essentially is a local government that's serving a population under fifty thousand. So if you look at this table, uh, you see the metropolitan cities at forty-five point six, um, billion dollars. So money that's going to directly to the city of Boston and the city of Springfield and any of those. Uh, any of those, uh, metropolitan cities. Their, their funding formula is different than ours. It's not just based on population. They're following the community development block grant formula. The community development block grant is largely for. Um, for, uh, this, uh, disadvantaged, uh, neighborhoods and, uh, and communities. So that's a big difference. So you're seeing a lot of stuff flying around about how, uh, large cities are using. Their funds and, and they move very quickly to use their funds to get them into these, uh, disproportionately impacted or disadvantaged neighborhoods. Uh, and so you saw that happen. The non-entitlement, uh, units of local government, of which the town of Northborough is one. We then, uh, received our money, uh, directly. It wasn't through the CDBG grant formula. Is really based primarily on just population. Um. So this is how it shakes out. So as you get through the state. Including the municipalities of Northborough, uh, including the municipalities of Commonwealth, received approximately eight point seven billion dollars. The Commonwealth, the state received five point three billion. And the towns municipalities, uh, received two billion. Counties received one point three four billion. Now, these numbers are important because the Commonwealth's five point three billion is not the same as the money that we're getting. So when we talked about. CARES funding in the past, it was money that went to the Commonwealth and a share of that came to us. These are distinct pools of money. So, uh, the other important thing that is worth noting is that in Massachusetts, there's only, I think, a handful of. County governments that have any function anymore. Worcester County government was essentially abolished. It's used for, for voting precinct. Uh, information and so forth, but, uh, it doesn't have a, uh, a government, uh, component to it. So because Worcester County doesn't exist, that allotment will be coming directly to the communities that make up the former Worcester County. So this is what this ultimately shakes down to for the town of Northborough. Our municipal allocation is about one point five eight million. Our county allocation is about two point nine three million. In total, we are, uh, set to receive, uh, four point five million dollars in ARPA funds. So from one point nine trillion to three hundred and fifty billion to nineteen point five to. Eight and point seven billion at the state level, this is what it translates into for the town of Northborough. And so it's just, I thought it's important to, to follow that, that funneling down. There's a lot of other money that was appropriated as part of the ARPA Act. Um, it's, but the ARPA Act for the local government fiscal recovery funds. That's what we're talking about here. So there's still a lot of other ARPA funding in other programs that's floating around out there. Anybody follow that trail so far? Alright.
Yes.
So in terms of the spending, how the ARPA funds work, it covers multiple years. So we were just gonna receive two tranches. Everybody learned their French with this and they came out with tranche and everybody's, what the heck is a tranche? It's two payments basically. So we received the funds in two payments. Uh, one, uh, one we received already, so half the four point five, a million dollars. And the second tranche or the second payment is scheduled to arrive twelve months later in May of twenty twenty-two. So the second, uh, round of funding should be coming shortly. Now, these funds have to be obligated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And a, a funding obligated means you have to appropriate them towards a project or an initiative. And then they must be spent by December tw- thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So what does this mean for us? In the town of Northborough, essentially it means that these funds are gonna likely span. Appropriations in use for us over fiscal twenty twenty-three and fiscal twenty twenty-four. Now, if there was an immediate need, if we had, uh, public health issues, if we had, uh, you know. You've seen, uh, some communities with significant homeless populations, you know, they dipped in and used that money to deal with the immediate. Needs, uh, due to COVID. And we'll talk in a, in a few minutes about what Northborough did, but we essentially through grant funding. And other sources, we've been able to meet those needs. We have not had to dip into the ARPA funding for our immediate. Uh, response for public health relative to COVID nineteen. So we have the ability to sit back a little bit, uh, to be a little bit more deliberative in our thought process. And to plan out how these funds could ultimately be used to the, to the largest benefit to the town of Northborough. So in terms of funding categories, these are directly off, uh, the ARPA website. So the things you can spend this funding on, you can use it to support public, uh, health response for COVID. Mitigation efforts, efforts, uh, public health, safety staff. Um, you can use it to address negative in, the negative economic, uh, impacts. Uh, for workers, families, small businesses, impacted industries. Uh, you can use it, uh, for, uh, premium pay. Some communities have, have looked at that. Uh, you can use it for, uh, replacing public sector revenue loss. That's one that we're gonna spend a little bit of time tonight talking about because that I think is the most, um, advantageous. Uh, pursuit of the use of money for the town of Northborough. And then last but not least, you've got these infrastructure categories, water, sewer and broadband. So as far as broadband infrastructure, this is making sure access to broadband. Uh, Northborough has two competing cable providers. Everybody has broadband access. It's not an issue, um, uh, for us. Water and sewer infrastructure, while we could certainly use these funds for water and sewer infrastructure. Our water and sewer, uh, enterprise funds function as separate entities. So they are run as businesses. So the fees are based on the cost to run those services. And while we do have significant capital needs, there are plans in place and they're part of the existing rate structure for. Our water and sewer enterprise funds. The other thing that's important to, in terms of equity is to note that. You know, roughly only about thirty percent of the town has sewer. It certainly is a component of our economic development, but not everybody would benefit. So although there's no reason, uh, there's no prohibition against using ARPA funds for water and sewer infrastructure. Um, there's been no, uh, request to do so, uh, at this point in time. Uh, it's a big component when you think about, you know, the census tract and the, and the, uh, disproportionate, disproportionately impacted. Uh, populations and neighborhoods, you know, one of the key components of that is a lack of access to clean water and, uh, and sewer. And so I think that's one of the reasons why ARPA, uh, specifically called out those, uh, those two areas, water, sewer and then broadband. So, um, I'm gonna talk a little bit now about, uh, the change in the rules. Um, and to make sure that everybody understands the ineligible uses under ARPA. So. These are the things in the areas that you can spend ARPA funding on, and then there are ineligible uses. So. Uh, first thing is, we can't take that four point five million dollars and reduce the tax bills with it. That's not allowed. Uh, the purpose of this fund is to infuse the economy and to help, uh, the recovery. And, um, that in the view of the federal government isn't to just provide tax release to, uh, communities. So. We can't take that money in case somebody asks and says, why don't you use some of that four point five million and reduce the tax impact? The other thing we can't do is we can't use that money and to put into our pension, unfunded pension liability. It is explicitly, uh, prohibited. Uh, we also can't use that money to pay down existing debt. So, uh, we have our, our debt service schedule. Um, we can't use this money to pay down our debt faster. Again, the intent of these funds is to, is to inject the money into the economy to help with the recovery. The other, uh, ineligible use would be for, uh, legal settlements or judgments. You know, think about, we are in litigation right now with the city of Marlboro over our Westerly treatment plant for the sewer. However, that out, whatever that outcome is, um, if there was a judgment there, this would not be an eligible expense. And then we talked in significant length in, in the prior presentation about our financial reserves, particular stabilization fund known as the rainy day fund. You are prohibited from taking this money and placing it into your stabilization fund. And again, the idea is they want this money to be expended and to be infused into, into the economy and to address. You know, uh, the needs. So, uh, the last bullet here, uh, talks about infrastructure. So infrastructure projects that. Aren't directly addressed in ARPA, water, sewer, um, stormwater was added. Stormwater was added, uh, there's, um, uh, broadband. We talked about, there's a couple other, uh, areas. Uh, unless they're specis- specifically allowed, uh, you cannot use those ARPA funds, uh, for those, that infrastructure. So think about things like, we talked a lot about adding sidewalks. Well, that would not be ineligible expense. It could be under certain criteria in a certain neighborhood and census tract that meets certain criteria. But in general, you know, you can't use ARPA funds to do roadway work, sidewalks, um, and to buy equipment. Uh, things of that nature. A lot of the capital stuff that we have a need for at the moment. Because we postponed a lot of that stuff to get through the pandemic. Now, the bright spot here is that if, if the revenues are, if the ARPA funding is taken in. Through the revenue replacement formula, then essentially the town can use those funds for any general government service. And basically that's defined as any service that we traditionally provide. So pretty much anything that the town of Northborough already spends its money on, we potentially. Under the revenue replacement model, we can use those funds for. So I'll tell you what happened, uh, in the January sixth. Final rules prior to January sixth of twenty twenty two. Uh, there was, the treasury had a very convoluted, complicated revenue replacement formula. Now, Jason Little, the finance director, actually went through the trouble of calculating out what our revenue replacement figures would be. And, uh, we spent time and money to have our auditors look at that. And, um. Ultimately, the treasury decided after getting so much feedback about how difficult that calculation was and how. Each state has all their own little twists. Uh, one that came up in Massachusetts was. If you're getting money for MSB, the Massachusetts School Building Authority for building a new school, does that count or doesn't it count in the formula? The treasury ultimately said, all right, enough of this. If you're receiving less than ten million dollars, it is assumed. That, that money, uh, that, that you, uh, could take a standard allowance, take it like a standard deduction on your taxes. The standard allowance of up to ten million dollars for revenue loss, uh, the revenue loss category. So if we come back to here, you have all of these, you had all of these categories, right? If we decide to use the, the, um, revenue loss replacement under the new January sixth rule. Essentially, that four point five million dollars becomes available to the town of Northborough for any government service. That is a tremendous improvement over what we were looking at because if you were looking at. Uh, you were watching other communities, particularly, uh, the cities with the CDBG formula. Uh, trying to justify and jump through hoops to make sure that what they were doing qualifies for ARP of, uh, expenditures. Or ARP of funding. Um, this rule essentially makes that requirement go away. So. The new provision allows a standard allowance of up to ten million. We only have four point five million. So all of our ARP of funding will fall into that. The pri- greatly simplifies, uh, the process for us. And, uh, not only in the appropriation and use of the money. But in the amount of reporting and the level in detail of justification for how the money is used. This is a game changer of a modification. And again. If we use that money, if we take that money in under, under the revenue loss category. Pretty much, uh, all general government services are, are eligible. So we have the maximum flexibility for the use of our ARPA funds. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Uh, not really a question. I'm just gonna say that, uh, having read through this and seen that essentially, uh, the. The standard deduction model for revenue replacement, it's just such a breath of fresh air. And I'm sorry that. You and Jason and the auditors had to go to the trouble of trying to compute it under the, the calculated, uh, uh, approach.
And we, and we had, and we had, um, communicated this to the board early on that, that that's the method that we wanted to use it. Uh, that, that's the method that we wanted to take these funds in through. Because it opened the doors for a lot of things that we wanna do, including the number of projects that, uh. Master Plan Implementation Committee is, is hoping to see some movement on in the, in the near future. And so we were holding off to wait for these final rules and we gave the feedback that there should be a standard allowance and. Uh, luckily, that's what ultimately manifested. So I think here's a couple of hands, uh, Mr.
Yes, I had Kristen first.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, so when did they change that, uh, basic standard deduction rule? When did that, when did you hear about that?
It, it changed on January sixth, this January sixth, a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, great.
And that's why when we've been talking about, we need to, you know, wanting to, what are we doing? What are we doing? And I was saying, well, we got this complicated revenue sharing, uh, formula. Just hang tight, hang tight. We're working through it. And, and because of all the, the hiccups and blips in Massachusetts, you know. What do you do with the enterprise funds, you know, lost revenue for the, the, the water enterprise fund? How does that factor in? Uh, we kept asking questions and so the US Treasury Department kept providing additional information and updates and updates. And finally, they said enough, we're gonna give you a standard deduction for, especially for the small towns that only have on a relative basis, a little bit of money. So again, I appreciate your patience and understanding why. That revenue replacement formula was something that we needed more guidance for them because we just couldn't, it was hard to get there. And then ultimately, they, we were, those were the interim rules. The interim rules really were designed to allow particularly the cities to move fast. Help the po- help, you know, spend that money on your homeless, uh, homeless, uh, sheltering issues, COVID. The, the really neighborhoods and the census tract, things of that nature. Towns like Northborough, we can afford to wait a little bit. Uh, and again, how people have approached this, it's all, it's all over the map. Um, but we wanted to, knowing the capital projects that we postpone. And the planning processes that we have in place, specifically capital improvement program and the master plan implementation committee. You know, we wanted to wait for these final rules. So literally, they just came out on January sixth.
Well, that worked out great.
It did, with, but it requires patience and, you know, and I appreciate your patience. And I know everybody wanted to know where we're gonna spend the money, how are we gonna spend the money? The first thing is we. We, we wanna go through the least painful process. The administrative end of this stuff is very burdensome. Uh, taking it through this way will greatly reduce the impact on our finance department and on the boards and committees in the departments for. Reporting and justification for, for, you know, uh, for the, the uses.
Well, and just one more thing, Jason, I just wanted to say, um, it sounds like. The Master Plan Implementation Committee is going to be heavily involved in spending of this money as far as. Or, or the planning for it, I should say, not the spending, but the planning for how the money is spent. It sounds like they will be heavily involved, right? I'm sorry. They, I think it was actually Julian who said, uh, it was decided at their meeting that they represent. Um, several different perspectives and different expertise levels in town. So. I don't know.
Exactly. And we're gonna talk about that in a minute. So in the six year capital improvement plan, we put placeholders. A couple of placeholders with no dollar figures for the master plan implementation committee. We also knew at that time that ARPA funds were coming. Um, if we, if we don't take these funds through the, uh, standard allowance. Uh, they would not be most, it would be difficult to justify using them for any of our. Uh, two priority master plan, um, uh, priorities, the, the downtown and sidewalk master plan initiative. But by doing it this way, those revenues do become available. And so we're gonna talk about that, uh, in a moment. Before I get into that, uh, as always, we have our guiding, we have our guiding, uh, policies. Um, GFOA, GFOA is the Government Finance Officers Association. Um, they're also the entity that runs the GFOA distinguished budget award program that the town of Northborough participates in. Their real, their goal is, is national best practices. They are the entity that, that lays out national back. Best practices in terms of public budgeting and, uh, and finance. And so just, these are just some of their guidelines, uh, that they issued. Or they made available and are asking boards, committees to take into consideration. The first thing is that ARPA funds, as we discussed, they're, they're non recurring. So they're essentially should be applied towards non recurring expenditures. So just like the conversation we had about free cash as being one time revenues. ARPA, despite the fact that they are, uh, going to come over, uh, two fiscal years. They're essentially one time revenues. They're not going to be recurring, which means. ARPA revenue should really follow the town's use of ARPA revenue, should largely follow the town's. Uh, financial policies regarding one time revenue. So they're a great match for studies and capital, uh, expenditures. Great caution always in avoiding creating new programs or adding on to existing programs. They're gonna require, uh, ongoing financial commitments because, again, you work it into the budget. This money goes away after fiscal twenty four. Now you have a structural deficit and you're gonna have to raise taxes or cut other programs to sustain. So you really wanna match up these revenues to the best possible use, just like we match up our free cash to the best possible use in accordance with the policy. Now, um. Uh, if you do use ARPA funds, uh, in the operating budget, uh, at all, in some communities, if they're in really tough shape. In other words, they lost so many, uh, uh, revenues, particularly local receipts. If their local receipts haven't come back, if they lost lots of restaurants, hotels. They can use this money as to backfill as a revenue source into their operating budget. But it does and has the same impact that the use of free cash does. It creates a structural deficit. So that's what this third bullet is saying, which is, you know, if you use it in your operating budget, be careful. Because you have to have a plan for how you're gonna get out from under that. Now, in the financial trend monitoring, I want you all to remember, we spent a lot of time talking about. OPEP, our other post employment benefit liability, right? We typically have in the operating budget, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that goes into a trust fund. That was one of the things that we cut when the pandemic hit. Again, the analogy I would draw is if you lost your job, you would stop contributing to your retirement account. Okay? When things got bad, we stopped contributing to our savings account. We stopped contributing to our OPEP liability. That's over a half a million dollars that was taken out of the operating budget that has to get back into the operating budget. And we can't just use OPEB, I'm sorry, we can't just use ARPA money to just fund it. You can. But it's the same thing as using free cash to fund it. In two years, that half a million dollar structural deficit is gonna be staring you in the face. So what we are proposing, and we talked about a little bit in the financial trend monitoring meeting was. We are gonna raise taxes by three hundred thousand, you know, that excess led to capacity. And we're going to use two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds, or this is what we're proposing. Into the operating budget to get back on the funding track for OPEB. And then in fiscal twenty twenty four, that two hundred and fifty thousand that we're using in twenty twenty three. Would then be phased in and absorbed into the tax base in the operating budget. So when this money goes away, all the things that we cut out of the operating budget are restored. And then on an ongoing basis is about maintaining that base budget. Does everybody follow me on that? You know, it's, it's, it's con- it's a little complicated, but basically the bottom line is. The only, the only ARPA funds that the financial team would recommend that you use in the operating budget. Is towards OPEB because we don't wanna miss another year of not paying into that. And we only have a one year use of it and the next year we would phase out of it. So think of it this way, when the pandemic hit, we put three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars of available funds into the operator. To support the operating budget. The next year, we pulled it out and replayed in and, and got back to the base budget. Yeah, we only did it to get through something. So we would propose to use. Two hundred and fifty thousand to get through this round to get back on track with OPEB. It's one of the most critical things, uh, for us to do in my opinion, because if it doesn't get back into, phased back into the operating budget. We're gonna fall behind on that spending plan. So it's just like, you lose your job, you stop contributing to your retirement account. That you gotta, you gotta dig deep, you gotta hold back and constrain your budgets and, and as your revenues come back. Carve that money back out and dedicate it back, uh, because, because that was only an ever intended to be a temporary move. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a, in a, in a few moments. And then, uh, the, obviously, the same thing that our policy recommends, GFOA is recommending, and that is. Invested in your infrastructure, invested in your capital. That not only will that not create a structural deficit for you or an operating hole that you have to fill later. But will actually pay you dividends in the future. So every piece of equipment or infrastructure or road or sidewalk that you invest in. Is a sidewalk, equipment, infrastructure and road that you won't have to finance or pay for down the road. So again, one time revenues matched up with one time, uh, expenditures. Couple of the things, um, that they're recommending, uh, they're reminding you that this money's gonna come in, in over two years. And they're saying, hey, listen, if you don't have to, don't spend it all in year one, right? Watch, wait, see what happens, see how things develop. Number one. We don't know if this pandemic is over or not, okay? Back in November, our task force stopped meeting. I was going out to dinner with my wife at restaurants with no mask on. It looked like the world was returning back to normal. Lo- man, next thing you know, we're on the verge of lockdown again. So we don't know what's gonna happen. So we need to make sure that we're holding some money in reserve for whatever might be coming in the upcoming year, right? So you don't wanna spend all of your money in fiscal twenty twenty three. Um, the second thing is that. There's all sorts of in- infrastructure investment, uh, uh, money coming from the federal level. The state has five point three million in, in their own ARPA funds. And there's gonna be a heavy focus on infrastructure and things of that nature. So we wanna make sure that we have resources and some liquidity available to us to leverage. So that we can take advantage of, of these grant programs and these other infrastructure programs that may be coming around the corner. Now, we don't know if we'll be eligible for them, right? But we might be, or in many instances. You know, sometimes we need to spend money to do design work so that we can then have a solid. Uh, a grant application for funding. So. Again, match it up to one time revenues, to one time expenditures, very heavy on the, on the, uh, capital and infrastructure. And don't be in a hurry to spend it all. If you have immediate needs and, and there's a real problem, by all means. We, I'm happy to say, sitting here today, we aren't in that position. We can take some time. And, and to, and to, and to move deliberately, uh, with these funds. So in that vein, if you, uh, if you go back to the categories that we can use the, um, ARPA funds for. The first main category was in response to COVID, right? Well, let's talk about Northborough's response to COVID at the moment. So the Federal Emergency Management Act, so that's FEMA. FEMA has been reimbursing us for, uh, testing, vaccination clinics and a significant amount of ongoing response. That reimbursement is at a hundred percent and it was, it was set to expire. Last, at the end of, uh, last calendar year and it was, uh, extended to April first of twenty twenty two. So we are still, um, we are still tracking our COVID expenditures and we are submitting them for reimbursement to FEMA. The other thing that we did, rather than use ARPA funds, is we sought out grants. And Kristen Black, our health agent, is phenomenal at sniffing out money. And so working regionally, we did the Greater Boroughs Partnership. It was the Health, Health Excellent Grant. We have secured three hundred thousand dollars per year for the next three years. And that money can be used for, with that money, we have hired additional, uh, public health nurses. Uh, and resources, we, uh, we have our own testing lab in the basement of Town Hall that does PCR testing. Uh, and we have done much of the expenses and staffing for clinics that we've done. Uh, as you know, we had at one point, when vaccination started, Northborough had the highest vaccination rate of any community in central mass. And we still tend to be leading that pack. The other thing, we just received another grant for contact tracing. The state is no longer doing contact tracing. They got out of the business. We were able to secure a grant for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this year and next year. To hire an epidemiologist. So you've seen email communications and Kristen Black, our health agent. Talked about the epidemiologist that we've just brought on staff. That was hired through the, through this grant. So we've hired additional, uh, contact tracing, uh, staff, nurses and an epidemiologist. That's why that with all of those resources. And again, we have, we have availed ourselves of the av- of, of the. of of the grant funds that are out there. We haven't had to, like some other communities, use our ARPA funds to run clinics and testing and contact tracing and things of that nature. I would say we are doing a phenomenal job, head and shoulders above most. And we're doing it with grant funding. At your last meeting, uh we are also seeking a uh Metro West grant for testing kits, home testing kits, fifty thousand dollars. We hope to hear the response about that grant uh in the next week. So again, these are all grant funds that we're securing and using. So our COVID nineteen response, we have adequate resources. We're doing a phenomenal job. We have run clinics. We're actually taking a break for clinics right now because we have sort of saturated the Northborough market with vaccination clinics. So we're hitting all of our benchmarks. So that's why we haven't had to use ARPA funds to deal with the COVID nineteen uh response. And then in terms of community outreach, I mentioned the COVID Task Force. The COVID Task Force throughout the entire pandemic met every week and that task force involved public safety, school staff, family services, senior center staff, finance staff, administration staff, and we cycled people in and out as, as needed. In every week, we looked at our public health response. We looked at populations in need. We did, we did check-ins with food pantry, community meals to make sure that any food security issues, housing security issues, uh uh medical needs, uh that everything was being met. If you recall, uh some of you got phone calls, but we called every senior citizen in town, two to three times depending on uh your age. And so on a weekly basis, we had a very good finger on the pulse of the needs of our community. And as of November, the COVID Task Force, as I said, stopped meeting. Well, we just started meeting again uh several weeks ago. We're meeting on a weekly basis. And we're having these uh conversations again. And so, when we look at the medical, the health response to COVID, as I said, we're, we're hitting all the marks. Things are going extremely well in that regard. In terms of the needs of the community or populations at, at, at risk, uh we are continuing to, to monitor that uh through the family services, senior center, uh these various nonprofits that we uh work with and um and things are still, by all accounts, in very good shape there. So, um it brings me to the next thing. Uh, this is new. You guys haven't, haven't heard this or seen this before. The COVID Task Force is really focused on the nuts and bolts of responding to the emergency and the needs, right? And as we met, we spun off and had another group start meeting. And this group consists of Parks and Rec, Senior Center, Board of Health, Police, Schools, Family Services, Library, Diversity, Diversity Inclusion Committee, myself. And we specifically had a series of, of meetings where we looked at what are the needs in the community? You know, we don't have, as I said, census track. We don't have uh disproportionately impacted uh segments of our community. We don't have a, a homeless population. There are needs, but, but one of the things that we did is we went and every group that you see listed here did a check-in and talked about the impacts, the school department impacts, the police mental health impacts, family and youth services, um the Board of Health. And the consensus was that on all fronts, although there are needs that are have elevated and in some instances have, have um evolved, that all those departments felt very comfortable that they had the resources available to them to meet the needs of the community. Which then led to another discussion, which is, well, then, then we know from talking to people and we know from all of the outreach that we have done throughout the entire pandemic. Uh, we know that there's a general level of anxiety that goes with the, with the pandemic. We know that people are feeling anxious, that people are tired of dealing with this issue, and there's a general sense of isolation. When the senior center called, over three thousand seniors, they found one, maybe two, that might need a little bit of extra help. All the other ones just that they called just wanted to talk. They were fine. They had what they needed. They had the, they had food security. They had medical. They had everything that they needed. They're just feeling isolated like everybody else was during the pandemic. And so as we come out of hopefully this pandemic, uh and I mentioned that the case, the caseload right now is half of what it was, from six hundred and forty-five down to a little over three hundred. That what we really need is a community wellness program. What we really need is the stuff that we talked about just a few moments ago with the DNI Committee. Uh, getting people out connected in their community, the community affairs uh type programming. And so, what we're, what we're spitballing at the moment, and probably at your next meeting, we're going to come back with a little bit more, with more detail, is an initiative and Lieutenant Griffin is no longer on the call. But he's the one that coined the term. He says, how about a Be Well Northborough? So Be Well Northborough as a community-wide wellness program. And so the idea is, we're going to have a lot of requests, you know, for lots of uh different community-related programs. The senior center said, hey, you know, can we get a little bit of funding to run a meditation and mindfulness uh program? The library wants to do uh body image things. Uh, the, the Board of Health would like to do more community health outreach type things. And so, so the community, there isn't a lot of direct, visible need. But there is an overall sense of anxiety and isolation that the group feels should be addressed. And so we envision this group and a funding source from ARPA that then could listen to any groups, uh group, public groups, community affairs, DNI, can, can come through this group and petition for funding to run programs. And the idea is to create a community calendar and to hire some assistance from a marketing individual to help us polish and market this whole initiative. And it'll be a year or two long, we'll see how it goes, but at least a year-long series of programs. Parks and Rec do things to get people outside, get, you know, what are they hearing? The kids need outside activities to run free programming to get kids outside, you know, more, you know, we talked about mindfulness at the senior center. Uh, more uh community health uh things out there with all these resources that we have. Uh, you know, we talked about, look, if there's a support group, if there's a group of uh folks that are feeling anxiety over the pandemic or feeling particularly isolated, you know, we can support, uh we can start a support group. Um, diversity inclusion, you've already heard in the presentation tonight, all the types of things that they're looking at. So the idea is to bring these all in under one umbrella with some coordination. You know, Be Well Northborough, think of it as a wellness program for the town of Northborough with really the idea to make people feel included and welcome. Uh, not isolated, to offer them physical activities, mental health activities. And we have these resources. So family services, you know, we have the ability to get some, anybody who needs counseling. We have a referral service that can get you in touch and connect with the council within two weeks. Okay? A lot of people don't know that despite our marketing. So if you have a program, it's say at one thirty-five and you're running a program, the idea is that all the other resources that we have available to residents, we can make that information uh uh readily available to them. And so you might go to a program at the library that's unrelated, but there might be information in brochures or pamphlets about mental health resources for you. And it's going to be a, 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 an initiative that is going to have a significant, it was envisioned as significant public outreach and uh trading of, of thoughts back and forth to model this around what people would like to see over the next year. So, that is what the staff and these boards and committees that were involved in this came back with. That's what we see frankly as the, the, the most burning need in Northborough outside of dealing with the immediate medical needs of COVID itself. So, more information will come on that, uh kind of a teaser. But uh Jen Bruno at the library has agreed to head this up. And uh, and we're going to, and they're going to continue to expand the circle of, of folks that they're talking to and seek feedback about what folks would like to see in the community i- in regard to this. So.
Julian?
Yeah, uh, this is, this is an excellent idea. Um, and I'm already thinking about, um, you know, projects and whatnot. Tomorrow, I think the cultural council is meeting and I'm, I'm not sure where they are with their public art project, you know, the, first of all, we know that there's a temporary one coming with the Go Outdoors Northborough. I think just that, that kind of fits into this whole thing, don't you think?
It does. And that's, that is what we envision. Uh, and so, you know, we're looking at taking a, you know, a, a meaningful uh chunk of money and can go a long way. Uh, for instance, the you know, when I, when, when we started the ARPA planning process, and we've been, we've been doing this for, for months, meeting, I've met with every department head, uh they, if they have boards and committees, they've discussed things with their boards and committees. And, and you know, when, what comes back is people are coming back and saying, you know, we need, uh, we need to open a homeless shelter. Uh, we need to have a uh a housing program. You know, we have very small need there that can be met through the existing services that we have now. But the senior center came back and said, all right, if we have access to ARPA funds, we would love thirty-five hundred or four thousand dollars to run a, a mindfulness uh program that would be open to the, it'll be held at the senior center. Obviously heavily marketed to seniors, but open to everyone. Those, those are the types of programs that we'd see. And the reason for having this under an umbrella is so that we are not duplicating or cannibalizing on programs. And that there could be a coordinated marketing campaign around this wellness program to get people back connected. And we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to pivot, you know, if, like right now, we obviously can't do a lot of in-person stuff, but you know, as the weather breaks, you know, uh, there's outdoor movies where people can feel comfortable socially distancing, uh programs for kids, uh all these things that, oh, in, in the group was just churning a whole bunch of ideas and and we have a draft of uh, of the proposal that I will send to the board and we can discuss it in a little more detail at your next meeting. But each, each of these, each of these, um, each of these uh departments and committees has ideas that they, how, how they would use the money. And ultimately, what we'd be looking for is uh for the Board of Selectmen to, to be on, on uh an agreement that this is a good a good program and um, and a good approach to uh overall wellness of, of the town of Northborough. So we, we just everybody, everybody was really excited about it and said, you know, this is what, this is what they're hearing. Isolation, anxiety, people want to be more connected. They want to feel a part of the community. What's the best way of doing that?
Uh, Leslie?
Yeah, I, I love this too. I think this is a wonderful idea. And what I like about it is that in a lot of ways, it takes, not that I don't like the idea of people speaking to us about what their needs are. But what I like about this is that it's a, it's a group of people who all get together and work together to figure out what is most needed. There'll be some overlapping things, but they're all discussing it as a group as opposed to onesies coming to us. And we're trying to figure out how things fit together and whether what Group A has said to us is kind of similar to what Group B to us said, said to us last week. You know, at the previous meeting. I just think this is a nice way to have people talking and working together to figure out what's best needed and how things can fit together like a, like a puzzle.
And a big component is, a big component is community outreach and feedback and let's, let's hear what people want. Let's hear what they think. Do they, they think you need a, a support group or something? Then we should, we, we could use some of the money to hire a counselor that specializes in that type of uh support group. If that, you know, that was just one suggestion uh that came up. Um, but there's a, there's a uh vendor who provides this um, you know, mindfulness program that the senior center proposed. It's uh, it's being done in another community. And so we already have the proposal, so we just need to, you know, how, what's the clearinghouse? How do we? And we don't want to have them run a, a mindfulness program and then have the library run one as well. So, uh e- everybody's really excited about this. I, I think it gets to the heart of what we're all feeling. And again, anybody in real need, uh food insecurity, housing insecurity, uh experiencing a traumatic issue or event, we have resources. And we'll make sure that those resources are available for those things. But in general, in Northborough, everybody just has this, you know, this, this isolation and anxiety. We want to be done with the pandemic. Um, and then this group can look at things that, you know, based on what's happening with the pandemic, because the Board of Health will be involved. Uh, you know, what types of programs we can do and when we can do them. Uh, but kind of really just feeling like a big kickoff of, once we can get back to the semi-normal. We're, this is our third year in this. We, you know, we need to, we need to be doing something different here. And this is what, this is what all of these, all of these actors, all of these folks, this is what we came up with. So. I know it's, it's conceptually is what we're doing, lots of more, more detail to follow, but the idea is lots of hands, lots of outreach, lots of feedback, and one coordinated marketing effort so that we're not duplicating things and we're hitting, you know, when I used to work in residential life at the university, uh, uh, we used to, we used to have this thing called the Wellness Wheel. You know, there's uh, you know, mind, body, you know, and, and you had to hit all of the pieces of the pie of the Wellness Wheel in your programming during the course of the year. It's similar to what we're, what we're conceiving of. You know, there's physical activities, there's mindfulness activities, there's mental health, there's support, there's inclusion. The idea is to hit all those, all of those um pieces to that Wellness Wheel.
I was going to say, the, the, the set of departments and then diversity inclusion committee, uh, you have great coordination among them, but then additionally, each of them has access to kind of broad linkages to the community and reaches different constituencies within the community. And so you do get a very, uh, you know, uh, all-encompassing input uh about what those needs are and where they're coming from.
This is the macro version of, you know, you're diversity in- inclusion wants to do programming, right? Well, they started talking to community affairs. Well, now we're just, we're just peeling it back and back and we're going to bring everybody in under this umbrella and I'm pretty excited. I think it's going to be very well received. And the, and the nice thing about it is, is it will be dynamic as we move along. If the needs change and, and people experience things, they want more of something or less of something, we, it's flexible. We can, we can move those programming around and evolve you know, through the course of the year. And, and ultimately, you know, we'll have to decide. Um, you know, if this is something that, you know, we want to perpetuate in some way uh in future budgets. But right now, this is what we see as, as the need. Any other questions on this before I move on? Excellent.
Uh, Julia?
Yeah, it's, it's really not about this, but about something that you had been talking about. Um, just, just in terms of the schools and um their revenue replacement or their, their cost from the pandemic. Is that, are, are you, are they talking about that separately from municipal expenditures?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So, so first of all, I just want, in terms of this initiative and the needs of the school, Mary Ellen Doug, Doug, Doug in, their wellness coordinator and her primary liaison, she serves on the community task force. She's been involved in this. Uh, in terms of finances and the needs of the school department, that's me with the superintendent uh working through the, through the budget, the budget needs there. The school department has access to grants and funding that's coming directly to them as well. So the town is getting funding, but they have numerous funding sources as well. Um, but the budget piece of it, that would be, you know, the superintendent and I working, um, trying to work with the forecast that we talked about as a group uh in, in December at the trend monitoring and the, and the forecast there. And then evolving, you know, what is he getting for grants? What's he able to deal with? What are the needs there? And, and that is, that is still evolving in, and um, in going on. But there's constant communication. I we're trading texts with the superintendent today uh on uh, on a number of issues. So, um, so yes, they're involved. They're, they have a seat at the table for this in, in budgeting. Yeah, but there's, 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 it's not magic. It seems like magic, but you know, we get to town meeting with all of the budgets and all the capital and everybody on the same page. It's because we're communicating constantly. And you know, a lot of work happens behind the scenes before it goes forward-facing. And that's why in even in dealing with ARPA, all the stuff that I've talked about And that's why even in dealing with ARPA, all the stuff that I've talked about, you know, that was going on behind the scenes to get us to having this conversation tonight. And there's more conversations that are going to need to keep taking place. So I'm going to get moving unless anybody has any other questions. All right. So this is just a slide that I pulled out of the financial trend monitoring. It's just to remind you and any viewers at home that we might have that how we got through the pandemic was we stopped putting money into stabilization, we postponed capital and we cut a million dollars of contributions to OPEB. Those things need to be priority in terms of restoration. In terms of our spending strategy with OPEB, we have existing boards and committees and we have existing plans that should be primary. The six-year capital improvement plan should be primary. That is the needs of all the boards and committees and all the town departments for, for years that has compiled into those, those needs. And then not least, we have the master plan and the master plan implementation committee. They literally have just gotten through, and this is another reason why, you know, we want to hold off. They have just gotten through voting, you know, the two top priorities, the downtown master plan and then a sidewalk master plan and complete streets. We just approved the policy at your last meeting. And so those are two things that I would envision, we want to want to talk about using ARPA funds for. Those are the two top priorities. And I think the most important thing to remember is that the ma, our, unlike most master plans that can be ten or fifteen years out of date, ours is hot off the press. We just spent the last twelve to eighteen months doing focus groups and reaching out to the community about what they would like to see and what their priorities are. So in terms of capital improvements and spending in ARPA, this has to be a part of that priority, the prioritization and the use of our ARPA funds. And again, it falls in, think about like master plan. You're probably talking about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for that plan based on the, the meeting we had last Thursday. Sidewalk master plan, we're just getting some information about needs from the consultant there. We're going to be doing our pavement, our assessment, our community assessment under the complete streets. So that's all moving forward. And these are things that are going to inform, you know, additional actual construction and expenditures.
This, this carries back to what you were talking about earlier as far as the choice of the revenue loss replacement option within the ARPA spending categories. That is the option that allows us to direct that money to general government services which would incorporate or be applied to these particular kinds of projects which otherwise would not qualify as eligible expenses because they aren't a related and proportionately appropriate response specifically to the COVID pandemic.
Exactly, exactly. And that's why the January sixth rule, final rule is so important to us. So, you know, the last bullet here is just, you know, reminding us that, you know, we have financial policies that have served as well. And we just need to be careful of how we use these funds and in terms of any recurring expenses. As I said, the only thing that I would, that I, that we would probably recommend is, is OPEB. Half of OPEB so we can phase it in back into the base budget. And then, you know, the Be Well Northborough, which again, these are distinct programs, one-time, one-offs. And if there are things that we see as valuable to the community that we want to sustain, we'll have to talk about how we work those into a future recurring budget. All right, guys, here's the slide everybody's wondering about. These are the spending requests. This is not our ARPA plan. This is not our capital budget, but I'll tell you what, this is pretty darn close to what we're going to be discussing. So let me explain this slide to you. None of this is set in stone. Up at the top, you see revenues. You see ARPA on the left, top left-hand corner. The four point five million dollars, the two tranches, they're split between fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four, right? We talked about spreading this money out, waiting to see if we need to leverage some of it for grant funds, waiting to see what happens with, with COVID. The second line on the revenues is free cash. At the beginning of, of this, I did a free cash plan presentation. So that two million dollar figure should make sense to you right now. That's the money that we have available for capital investment. So between ARPA and free cash in fiscal twenty-three, we have about four point two, four point three million dollars available to us. Now, I'm not going to talk about twenty, twenty fiscal twenty-four yet. But if you go down through here, you should recognize most of these things because these are all projects on the top here that are in the capital plan and have been in the capital plan for five or six years. Police cruiser replacements, here's a big one. Fire engine replacement. We have an eight hundred thousand dollar fire engine. They're replaced every twenty, twenty-five years. We have one that is due. If we don't use these funds, ARPA funds and free cash to pay for that, we would have to finance that with debt and, and pay it off over, over time. Because usually you don't have eight hundred thousand dollars to pay cash for. Luckily, the last time we bought a fire engine, there was only about six hundred thousand dollars and paid cash for that one as well. Roadway improvements, we talked about this at great length, the chapter ninety money is, is, is supplemented with three hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget and three hundred and three hundred twenty, twenty thousand dollars here of a roadway maintenance and improvements. That's the minimum amount that we need to maintain our roads. Then you've got the equipment that was postponed during the pandemic in fiscal twenty-one. And some of it, we couldn't fit in fiscal capital budget for fiscal twenty-two because we didn't have a lot of available funds to us. Because again, the pandemic was constraining our revenues. But you got loader replacements, there's a tight tank, this is a DEP required upgrade. When you wash the vehicles for, for the, at the DPW, it can't just wash into the wetlands or wash into our septic. It's supposed to go into a tight tank and be remedied. So this is something that we are, from a regulatory standpoint, we need to do. The one that I was waiting on, and I think it was Leslie that reported at your last meeting that the school department had postponed the flat part of the roof at Proctor School. It didn't, we were looking to actually fund that. That's a, a one and a half million dollar project. And again, that's been in the capital plan and moved up every year. I think the, the cost of the work was more extensive than they originally thought. And we have issued, we as a town, have submitted a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority for a repair program. If accepted, that one point five million dollar roof would be roughly cut in half, somewhere forty-eight or fifty percent. So that's why that is not being funded in twenty thirty-three. It's the only thing that I put in fiscal twenty twenty-four because I made a commitment to the superintendent that that has been in the capital plan for the last six years and moved up. That will need to be funded. And if we don't use ARPA funds for that, then we're going to have to finance it with debt. So we're going to take on debt. But we can pay cash for it. And then you get down, where this is not final, but one of the other projects is the Peaslee parking lot. You know, we're looking at some Band-Aid options out there because ultimately when that building gets completely renovated, we are not, you know, the parking lot may get reconfigured, but that project is off a few years because we have to wait for MSBA to partner with us. And that parking lot needs some help. So we're, we're, that's one that we might be looking to bring forward. That's not, that's not been, that has not been decided. And then going to the ones that we talked about and Julian Hirsch is well aware of. Again, the, the downtown master plan study committee literally just last Thursday got a scope of service in a sense of what it is that they want to bring forward out of the master plan. And it's a downtown master plan study and that is somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That is a perfect use for one-time funds, either free cash or ARPA. The other thing is, we are looking at this sidewalk master plan and we need to start pumping some money into our sidewalks. One of the big things that we need to do is we need to fix the sidewalks that are in poor and fair condition right now. The number, I just got this number this morning from Scott, who just got it from the consultant. In order to fix all of the sidewalks in town that are in poor or fair condition, it's about one point four, one point five million dollars. So if we used out of these two tranches, a good chunk of money in fiscal twenty-three from ARPA and a good chunk in twenty-four, we might be able to, to polish off a lot of the old deferred maintenance on our sidewalks and get us talking that much faster with complete streets about adding new sidewalks and adding sidewalks, connecting those gaps that we've talked about in previous meetings. So in fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four, you know, I think those sidewalks are, it's the number two priority from the master plan implementation committee coming out of this long eighteen-month community-long outreach. So that, I think, is something we want to look at. We only just got this request again, as money is flowing through the feds and through the state, the state is pumping money into all these programs. Well, DHCD, Department of, of Housing has this program where they're offering eight hundred thousand dollars. This is Rick Lee from, from the Northborough Affordable Housing Corp. calling me last week saying, you know, the, the state is, is just has this pocket of money, they're putting it out there and if communities can jump on it, we might be able to build some affordable housing in the Northborough Housing Authority's property using, you know, significant amount of state, state grant money, CPC money and a little bit of possibly a little bit of ARPA money. And so literally nobody's, you know, th- these are the folks that, you know, I'm talking to, trying to compile this and bring this all into one place. So that is an ask that we, you know, we, we should talk about. That one subsidy, the one operating budget subsidy, I've talked about three times now, is a two hundred fifty thousand dollars of OPEB. We've got to get funding that again. And unless the impact of trying to fit a half million dollars into the operating budget is significant. And we need to, you know, we need to wean ourselves off and face it back in. It's all about smoothing all of these impacts out. The Be Well Northborough Initiative, I had fifty thousand dollars in there. Then the thought is, well, maybe a hundred thousand dollars and it's used over the two years or used as long. It has to be used over the two years. But that would allow them to hire a consultant to help them with the marketing. We're going to create a community calendar that has all of these events in it and to do this back and forth outreach to the community about what they'd like to see. Again, this is, you know, a ballpark figure. It can be higher, it can be lower. And then last but not least, we have a COVID expense reserve. That's just money held in reserve in case FEMA denies some of our expenses or reimbursements or something else happens and we have an expense COVID-related that was unanticipated that our current grant programs, you know, that we're working with, you know, won't cover. Or they reject something that we did and we have to, we have to backfill it. The big one is, you know, if FEMA, as we're continually submitting our reimbursements to FEMA, as they review those, they oftentimes will reject them. And sometimes we can convince them to cover them and other times we'll have to find some other place to cover them. That's why you have to be very careful how you use any of these funds because if they don't, if they don't get covered or they're not acceptable, they're going to come back and bite you. And you need to make sure that you have a way of paying for them. So conceptually, in terms of the spending requests for ARPA, this is what you're looking at. And if you watch magically between the revenues and the expenditures, we can do comfortably, we can do everything that you see here in fiscal twenty twenty-three using our very healthy free cash, two million dollars in our first tranche, our first payment of ARPA for twenty twenty-three. It gets us off dealing with the community needs, the master plan needs, that the capital improvement plan, the capital projects that we postponed because of COVID. And it also gets us back out dealing with, you know, the general well-being of our community. So in fiscal twenty twenty-four, the only thing, like I said, I placed there against, against the ARPA funds or the free cash would be that Proctor School roof because that's the number one ask of the school department. And one way or another, you know, we need to do that. But you obviously will have additional free cash in fiscal twenty twenty-four. Is it going to be three point four million? And are we going to have two million of that to use on capital in twenty twenty-four? If I were a betting man, I would say no. But, you know, could you have a million dollars? Yeah, you can have a million dollars. And so maybe you got three point two to work with. But if we can get rid of a good chunk of this bubble of capital, we get back to on our normal funding schedule. And then the other thing too is as these, as the master plan, the downtown master plan project plays out and the sidewalk master plan and complete streets plays out, the projects that come out of those, we can look at funding some of those in fiscal twenty-four using these ARPA funds. And all of this that I just covered with you meshes perfectly with our financial policies and meshes perfectly with the GFOA best practices guidelines. And everything here, if we did everything here a year or two from now, we will be in better financial condition than we are right now if we didn't spend the money on these items. So. Moving forward, the process, the financial planning committee, their job is to review all capital requests, the appropriations committee reviews all spending plans and makes recommendations to town meeting. The master plan implementation committee is finalizing its downtown master plan. I chose the hundred and fifty thousand dollar figure. It's going to be closer than, I think they're around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty. And they added a whole bunch of scope of services at their meeting on Thursday. All of which are things that they want to do and the master plan identified as things that we should be looking at. We can comfortably address those and, and deal with that master plan moving forward. We also have the information about sidewalks, complete streets. That is going to be a big focus in fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four. Again, that is the second, those are the top two priorities of our community as told to us by our community through focus groups and surveys and outreach and brought forward by the master plan implementation committee. And we can address those. I'm still waiting, the school department on the Peaslee, we're still talking about those numbers and whether or not that comes forward. So that's still a work in progress. And at your next meeting, we'll have a little bit more in-depth discussion about the Be Well Northborough Initiative and implementation plan. And then last but not least, as I said, we have, we have assessment, we have to continue to assess all of the other grant funding that we've talked about before. All of this stuff is in play, guys. And all of this factors into our fiscal twenty twenty-three budget. So with that, I'm going to stop. Stop screen sharing so people can see each other. Lot of work's been done behind the scenes. We are working through existing boards and committees and existing processes. I think the master plan and the master plan implementation committee is the best example of, of the types of projects that would lend themselves well to ARPA funding. And what we just described here is not going to create a structural deficit. And this type of spending plan would not, would put us in a better financial condition in years two and three from now instead of a worse one, complies with all of our, all of our policies. And again, this is a, this is where we are at this point. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, John, for very comprehensive and.
Julian made me do it faster than I was ready to do it this meeting because I wanted to have some conversations. Trying to have some conversations with financial planning and the master plan implementation committee and the Be Well Northborough group, trying to get this stuff a little bit more polished up. But, but in a nutshell, this is, this is what the discussion would look like moving forward.
I, I just, from my own perspective, seeing that proposal for spending in FY twenty-three, I think I'm happy to see that some of the backlog of deferred capital requests is being addressed in that. I think what people need to, you know, understand about this is that these monies impart our revenue replacement due to COVID impacts and part of what we did literally was to reduce our budgets and defer some of our capital spending, defer our OPEB contribution to get through those couple of years. And this is precisely what we need to get back on the path toward, to, to meeting those expenditures and staying on that schedule to make sure that those things are addressed. So I'm, I'm happy to see that. I, I do think that in terms of new initiatives or priorities, the master plan and the mass plan implementation committee is the, the best source of ideas for what, you know, what we choose to undertake in the community along that line. Those are being addressed with those two priorities. And then the Be Well Northborough, I'm just, I'm picturing the logo and wondering if that's going to have a. I'm picturing the logo and wondering if that's going to have a silhouette of Brian Griffin on it. I think that's just a, oh, there you go.
Then took a shot at it. We might need, you know, a little bit more help in our, our marketing. But the group, they really took in and and they're very excited about taking that, that project forward.
And and once again, that the the way that is evolving or is structured initially is through departments that have a very broad reach across all constituencies of the community and you know, I I'd like to think that that's going to generate a lot of good ideas and a lot of programs that are going to be well, well received for the, for the current circumstance. Any other questions, comments? Leslie?
Yeah, John, thank you. There's a lot of work putting this together, it appears. So thank you very much for this information. A quick question about Peaslee, and I don't know if I missed this and you did explain this. I I do apologize if you did. What is or when is the likelihood of Peaslee coming online in terms of a project and assuming we get an MSBA approval and reimbursement? And then how necessary is the paving at Peaslee so that we're not doing something that ultimately we have to pay for again because they do, you know, redesign the parking lot and that's part of the figure?
Yeah, and and it that's a great question. And the Peaslee, so just, so the the fire station building project was, always has been ahead of Peaslee. It was Lincoln Elementary, Fire Station, and then Peaslee in terms of large projects. And once we got Lincoln, the way the MSBA works, the Massachusetts School Building Authority is, we got ten point four million dollars for that project. And so once they get it, they tell you, go away. We don't want to see you again for many years. And again, like most projects, they do prioritize communities with that are in more financial need. So in general, you know, the cities and the communities that have a financial need are are a little bit higher up in the priorities. But we touch base and and it really comes down to when the superintendent and school committee thinks that MSBA would be receptive to a statement of interest. And if you remember, when we did Lincoln Street, I think we submitted, I want to say three statements of interest before we finally got invited into to collaborate. They have all these funny
Only three?
And and when we came, when we came into colla-, when we came into the collaboration meeting, we went to Boston, we met with them. We found out afterwards that we weren't really keyed up to get funded, but we got funded because we came forward. It was me, the superintendent, and and several other folks. We came, the school committee, we all came forward and said, the town of Northborough is on the same page. We want to do this project. Here's our six-year capital plan. Here's our financial plan. Here's our debt. We are ready to do this project. The only thing holding it up is you. And we can guarantee you, oh, we went in and we said, we have the unanimous support of every board and committee, every member of every board and committee in Northborough. So if you approve this, we're pretty confident that we're going to be able to deliver to you at town meeting. A lot of other communities got awards and couldn't get the projects either through their boards and committees or it got rejected at the ballot. We had unanimous support from all the boards and committees, near unanimous support at town meeting, and eighty percent at the ballot for a dead exclusion. So MSBA, if they make these awards, they want to see that you're going to actually be able to do the project. And so for us, you know, we're teeing this up. It's going to take a couple of years. We would want to go to them with the exact same. Unfortunately, I can't tell you because I don't control it. Like most of the capital projects, I can tell you if it's in our plan, we try to space things out. We try to spread things around. MSBA is the, is the, is the factor there. And I I just don't know where they are. On a, here's one thing that we do need to think about. All of this money is, all of this money that's coming through ARPA and coming through the federal government, there's talk of infusing more money into the MSBA program and making more money available. So it could be more money for things like the Proctor Street Roof, but it could also mean that if they get an infusion of cash, that they may work through their backlog of projects and will be more open to potentially bringing in, you know, more projects. But we're getting, we're getting closer to getting on to where we should need to start submitting. But we do know, you do know, we have the fire station is really on deck. Unfortunately, that project has been delayed because of the remediation work that was required at the preferred site. So we haven't closed on our, our site yet, but we will be closing on that site in July, but we're able to start moving forward with that project. So when things get pushed out, you know, everything gets bumped a little bit, but given Peaslee, I think we just need to look at when MSBA might be willing to give us another, you know, fifteen million dollars. So that's, that's really the issue. We couldn't possibly do Peaslee Elementary School on our own. Lincoln Street was twenty-five and a half million dollars. That has escalated to, you know, probably something in the early thirty million range for, for Peaslee. We would need MSBA to cover at least half or close to half of that. So so again, that's, you know, it's not entirely in our hands, but those are conversations we have every year with the superintendent and and the school committee.
Thank you, Leslie. Julian?
So at one of the last few slides you showed where where the projects would be funded, there was the Lincoln Street culvert for three hundred thousand, I think?
Yes.
So is that possibly with all the other money that's coming through with like infrastructure and stuff like that, is that a project that might be funded through other?
That, no, I'm laughing because that is, I I had Scott Sharpen here and he's on, he's on this meeting sitting in front of my desk today. How many times did I ask you that question, Scott? And I said, are you sure? Can you go back and check? And and he assured me that as of right now, no, but we will keep watching if that becomes available, if something becomes available. We'll try to take advantage of it. You know, one of the things that we've had to do over the years is we've had a number of culverts that had needed to be replaced. They're very expensive. And we either don't qualify for the covert program that the state has or it doesn't make economic sense. They make you build it such that you'll spend even more money than the grant is worth. As Scott through the chair, I don't know if you have, but I beat him up pretty good. You can take a couple swipes out of him while you're here too.
So through, through the chair, the, there is grant money available for culvert replacement. The criteria is that you meet the stream crossing standards. So the stream crossing standard is one point two five times the bank width of a, of a stream. So when you go on a Lincoln Street, you look to the left, you look to the right, it's these wide swaths of water. The stream crossing standard to be met, it would be over twenty feet wide. It just doesn't make sense to build a twenty-foot bridge where there was a five-foot pipe before. We looked at stream crossing standards at some of the other culverts we did last year. You often run into utility issues. Water mains are easy. You can lower a water main. You can't lower a sewer. Sewer flows by gravity. You just can't lower it. So sewer is is very often the the limiting factor when it comes to meeting the stream crossing standard. You, you could end up with a exposed sewer pipe in the bed of a river. So we look and we ask, I had multiple meetings with DER and MVP and unfortunately, answer was no.
And and again, this kind of shows that the idea is that, you know, it takes time to bring these things to you because we're flushing all this stuff out and we're chasing down any potential source of money before we come back and we use our own. And 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 that's what's occurred here. I will share with you too. I may have been in touch, phone calls. Today I made phone calls again to members of our legislative delegation. There is money floating around for potential earmarks. We have put in for earmarks for water and sewer projects and culvert projects. Earmarks are an entirely political process, and this is where there's no rhyme or reason to it. It depends on how much political clout you have, whether or not you can bring some pork back to your communities. Unfortunately, Northborough is at the moment in a bit of a transition. We no longer have two state senators. Eldridge is no longer our senator. We only have Senator Chandler. Danielle Gregoire is no longer our rep or will no longer be our rep with the redistricting. Megan Kilcoin will drop down to only two precincts. And then a new precinct nineteen is created. So basically, we have Senator Chandler in and Megan Kilcoin for two of our districts. So I'm, you know, I I was on the phone today with Danielle Gregoire, who promised me to work with me. She is the, going to be the chair of the Infrastructure Committee. So she is the one that's going to have her fingers on this stuff. And she promised me when I yelled at her, last time I yelled at her, but jokingly called her up and I said, what the heck? None of the stuff we requested got funded. You know, you saw some of the money getting passed around recently, some earmarks. And and she said she tried, but she will, and she will try again, and she is is in a position now to have some influence, but we'll continue to work with her even though she's no longer going to be our rep and we will work with whoever gets elected as our new rep and our senator. But, you know, until that, until that group gels and gets some political clout, it's harder for us to get earmarks or to get things tagged onto bills. And that's why when you see, when you, when you see the money flow, look at who the rep is. You know, if it's the Speaker of the House, the Senate, or somebody on a powerful Ways and Means Committee, they generally have more clout. Those, the, 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 the folks in the legislature that hold the key board, the key committee appointments are the ones that have been there the longest and have the most influence, and they generally are able to get things into budgets and and in earmarks. So we'll continue to work, but those phone calls were all made as well. So we'll push on every front, I promise you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions or comments? Julian?
Yes, so, um, clearly, this is a lot of work to figure out this funding and to keep keep tabs on possibilities coming down the road. And I guess this goes to, to John, the question, should we be thinking about hiring a consultant to help us move throughout this process?
You know, I appreciate that question. And I know you've asked it in the past. My, my response to this would be, would be, I don't think it would be helpful to us at this juncture. And the reason for that is if you look at these funds, essentially what you're talking about is three percent. It's just three percent of our budget in fiscal twenty-three and three percent in twenty-four. If if a typical year, we have a three percent increase in our budget and you gave me a six percent increase, I could tell you where I would spend it. I wouldn't, because we have existing plans, we have existing needs that we are aware of. So when you think about it in terms of of the overall budget, it's not a lot of money. And where you, I just outlined for you exactly where we would spend it and where I would recommend we spend it based on working with all the departments and 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 the staff. On the reporting side, because we held back and we waited and we're not trying to justify, you know, these programs, it's just revenue allotment. The reporting is very simplified. And I guess if at some point we thought it would be helpful, at least on the reporting side of things, to take a little bit of of pressure off of Jason at that time, we would come back to you and make that ask. But but at this point, I don't, I don't, all the, all the, all the consultant's going to come in and do is ask you, what do you think you want to do? And I'm like, this is what I want to do. And they'd be like, yeah, that looks good. I know Southborough hired a consultant. I had a conversation with Mark Purple, the town manager there today, and they don't have any proposal done or anything packaged up. So we're actually kind of ahead, just, you know, working through our normal channels, the way we, we do our budgeting and our capital planning. So actually, I think ahead of the game in terms of how this would work out.
So so far, so good. But if things continue, if things get complicated again,
They get complicated. You know where I think, you know where I think, no, I think, Julian, where we would probably hire, potentially hire consultants is as, as we get a better handle on the grants that are out there, we may come back and request some money to be released, to hire a consultant to chase some of the grant money or to to put proposals together. And again, that goes back to, you've got, you've got twenty-three and twenty-four. It, it, you're not going to know what these programs are because the money has to flow from the feds to the state. The state has to go through their political process, decide if they're going to go through existing programs or create new programs. Then they create new programs, but they don't have any rules or regulations for how you access those programs. So then the, the department that's responsible has to promulgate rules and regulations, and then you'll have questions about those. And then you apply for the program. So all that stuff, I think much of of fiscal twenty-three is going to be about the state figuring out how this money is going to flow. The conversation I had with Representative Danielle Gregoire today, I said, Danielle, what's going on? When are we going to see this, this, this infrastructure money flow through and and you're going to let me know what we can apply for? And she said, yes. But they just had a meeting with state, the treasury, and things are going back and forth and they're not sure how it's going to flow and what programs are going to come through. So all that stuff has to play out. And so what we want to do is let that play out. We know what we want to do in fiscal, or I think we know what we want to do in fiscal twenty-three. We let this play out and then we are positioned to leverage the funds that we have to take advantage of whatever grants or programs are out there that we potentially could be eligible for. And if it makes sense to hire consultants for specific programs or applications, then we absolutely would make that ask. But as far as just like general compliance at this stage, I would say at this stage, it's not necessary. But if that changes, we would certainly come back to you.
Excellent. Thank you again for this excellent presentation. It was really informative.
Well, you, I wasn't quite ready to make it, but I spent the weekend finishing it because you wanted it. So
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm joking. Again, it's just, you can see from what I presented, a lot was happening. I always say our budgeting process is like water ballet. You know, at the point at which we present, you know, it's hopefully grace and beauty above the water, below the water and leading up to it. So a lot of flailing to make that happen. So we've been working across the board, across departments with everybody to kind of package this up for you tonight. So so I think we're in good shape though, and I'm, and I'm glad it was well received. And I appreciate your attention on a very long, very long meeting with me doing a lot of talking.
Well worth it. Any other questions, comments about this, board members? Seeing none. John, thank you very much, you and staff for having packaged up all this information and it really is extremely informative and I think it's going to be helpful to any members of the public who view the meeting to much better understand the ARPA program and the different options and some of the motivations for for how that money might be channeled, given all of these constraints. So thank you.
Exciting. These are great projects. The staff's really excited, really excited. So
We should have another pandemic, huh?
Well, let's not get crazy. Let's get through this one first.
All right. Next item, execution of cemetery deeds, one, one, three, eight and one, one, three, nine. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board's vote to execute cemetery deeds, one, one, three, eight and one, one, three, nine.
So moved by Kristen Wickstead, seconded by Julian Hirsch. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan. And I, Jason Provot, aye, carries unanimously. Any other business to come before the board?
Nothing deceiving.
Nothing more, really?
I think you've heard enough from me tonight. I'm tired of listening to me tonight.
Well, in that case, I suppose I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if anyone wants to make one. I had a first so moved by Scott Rogers and I will entertain a second to that motion.
Second.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Kristen Wickstead. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Provot, aye. We are adjourned. So thank you all very much for all the work, for all the presentations and for all of your participation and attention tonight.